Mr. Chair, you ready for tomorrow? Election Day?
Ready as one can. We've got, we've got. What's that, Roger?
You're gonna be up at Town Hall?
I will.
Reading people?
Our high school, right? Trying to send me to Town Hall, Roger?
Actually, I, I think, I think they're voting for you at eight corners.
Eight corners, okay. All right, I think we have quorum. Should we wait a minute or two, see if Robin joins us? Rick DePerry's on super high wind duty tonight. Is that correct?
Yeah, we lost, we lost power here along Hackers Parkway and Scotto Hill.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, yeah, we were out for a couple of hours, but we've got a generator.
Oh, wow. No problems yet here. All right, well, at six, I show 6:30, I say we get this thing kicked off, we've got a busy agenda. So then, I'm gonna call this meeting to order, welcome everyone to November 2nd, 2020, Town of Scarborough Planning Board Meeting. This is a continuance from the Monday, October 26th meeting. We have a pretty full agenda again. First order of business aside, actually, I'll ask for clarification on this, and maybe Rachel, you might know. Do we start this meeting like you would a typical meeting, or because is it a continuation, do we just kind of jump in?
I don't know, I don't know what the rules are, I think we could probably start it as we want to.
Okay, so the only thing that I would say is that we do have the minutes. We had a table meeting, we do have minutes available for the October 5th meeting, so I guess I'll rewind us to that point. But first, I'll call, I'll call the roll, just to make sure we can all check in. Rachel Hendrickson.
Here.
Roger. Your Bealy?
Yeah.
Jennifer Ladd?
Here.
Robin Saunders. Rick DePerry. Rick Meinke.
Here.
All right, I'm going to show that we are missing, Robin Saunders is a voting member and our first alternate, Rick Meinke. So that would make, I'm sorry, Rick DePerry, Rick Meinke becomes a voting member for this evening. On sites of business is the approval of the October 5th, 2020 minutes, I don't know if everyone had a chance to review those. If you had, I will entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
Okay.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, I'll call the roll again, Rachel Hendrickson.
I, yes.
Roger Beely?
Yes.
Jennifer Ladd? Rick Meinke?
Yes.
Make me, yes, sure that is unanimous, thank you. All right, we left off on item number 14, State Manufactured Homes, oh, I'm sorry, I'm gonna quickly jump into protocol here. Remember to read my disclaimer before every one of these meetings. This is a remote meeting using Zoom, people can access the meeting by going to this page, and for viewing only, click on the YouTube link for the virtual, and provide public comment at this meeting, you can click on the Zoom link. Planning Board recommends written public comment prior to an upcoming meeting, at this time, given the remote video conference meeting format, directions can be found on the Planning Board's webpage. These are muted, they must raise their hand to be called on during the public comments or parts of the agenda, please only raise your hand once it's time for public comment and not during the applicant's presentation or deliberation. If the chair happens to drop off the meeting difficulties, the vice chair shall start running the meeting until the chair returns. All right, disclaimer is over with, we are to item number 14, State Manufactured Homes, Inc., request an advisory opinion for a miscellaneous appeal for an expansion mention of illegal non-conforming map R56 lots 11 and 12.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so this project's in the R2 zoning district, the existing Pinecrest manufactured housing community. So they have applied for a miscellaneous appeal to the zoning board of appeals for the expansion of illegal non-conforming use. As you may recall, in accordance with the zoning ordinance, before making a decision on any miscellaneous appeal, the ZBA shall refer the appeal to the planning board for an advisory opinion. So the applicants proposing to expand their existing community from its current size of 111 units to 143 total units, an expansion of 32 units. The staff has provided the board with, with several comments for your consideration related to the proximity of the resource protection, insur率and overlay zoning districts, buffering between the proposed development and the Scarborough connector highway, and the required coordination with South Portland, giving site access and sewage disposal will be directed through that municipality. At this point, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Jamel. And for the, either Teresa or Andy?
Yes, good evening, can, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you, Jamel, and I'd just like to say, at the start of this meeting, thank you to the, to the Planning Board and staff for accommodating this meeting, as, as you'll appreciate, and as Jamel under explained, we're going through a fairly complex process, approval process for this project, and we're actually on the agenda for the zoning board in November, so it really helps us out a lot that you've scheduled this meeting rather than putting us off. Otherwise, potentially, we could have been backed up another month at the zoning board, so we certainly appreciate you accommodating us for this hearing. Just to explain a little bit, the process that we're going through and the reason we're going through this process, as you're probably aware, there is a state statute that governs the regulation of manufactured housing communities, that allows for certain accommodations, including expansion of existing manufactured housing communities where they are in municipalities currently. The zoning ordinance in the Town of Scarborough is not quite fully aligned with the state statute in that this is still considered a non-conforming use in the zone, and that requires us to go through the appeals process to, to apply for an expansion that, that under the state statute appears to be allowed by right, so that's the reason we're here. And I'd be happy to talk you through the, the format of what we're looking at, I don't know if, if, Jamel, if you want to hand over controls or can hand over controls to me, so I can show my screen, or whether you'd prefer to just show the plan yourself, either way works for me.
I can jump in, I think you're able to share, Andy.
Let's try this. Can everyone see that, okay? Yeah, so this is the existing Pinecrest manufactured housing community, this is the Scarborough Connector. My apologies for the orientation of this plan, as you'll see, it's kind of backwards, you'll see that the north arrow pointing downwards towards the right there. Unfortunately, that's the way the survey plan was set up, so to read all the text properly, this is the way we have to orient it. So this is the Scarborough Connector, this is the existing Pinecrest manufactured housing community, and Main Street, South Portland is actually down here, which is the entrance and exit to the community. So what State Manufactured Homes is proposing to do here is to expand the community through a gap between two of the existing units, out onto an upland area to the west of the existing community, and then across this land, which is actually the Portland Water District's transmission main, a 36-inch transmission rain runs through here, so we have to go across there with the road, and then expanding with further units on the west by the Scarborough Connector here. As Jamel mentioned, there is a resource protection zone associated with the Nun-Such River, which is right up in this corner of the site here. These are the approximate limits of the resource protection zone and the approximate limits of the shoreline overlay zone, and we can get into a little more detail of that as we, as we get further along. Essentially, what the special exception and the miscellaneous appeals process requires us to do, or requires the planning board to consider and requires us to demonstrate, is that the proposed expansion of this use is not going to cause unhelpful conditions, and generally speaking, is not going to be incompatible with any of the uses surrounding it. As you can see, the only use is surrounding where we are expanding here is in fact the existing Pinecrest housing community, the nearest residential community is actually in South Portland, right down at the bottom of the screen here, and these are the abutting streets. There are also some residences, I believe, along Main Street here, and some commercial uses along Main Street. So this is really tucked away behind the existing community, and between that and the Scarborough Connector. The existing community and the proposed expansion will both be connected to public sewer and public water. The public sewer actually drains via an existing pump station located right here in the, in the existing community, and pumps to South Portland. We have talked to the folks in South Portland, and we actually have a capacity letter, we just received the capacity letter for sewer from those folks today. We're actually meeting with, with Portland Water District to do some test pits on their transmission main tomorrow morning, and they have indicated that they do have, obviously, they do have capacity right next to their transmission main, and they're willing to continue to serve this and the expansion under certain conditions, and obviously, they're a little sensitive about the crossings over this transmission main, and rightly so, which is why we're doing the test pits, and then we have to show them by, by what we're designing, that we're not going to interfere with the, the construction or the operation of that existing main. I pointed out the resource protection zone and the shoreline overlay zone down in this corner. There's also a large freshwater wetland, actually, in this area of the site. It's between the residential community that's in South Portland and the Portland Water District Transmission Main, and there's a good reason for that. All the drainage from these communities actually comes out through pipes right onto the Pinecrest property, which I guess was the way things were done back in the day. So the street drainage from South Portland actually comes onto the property. Before the Portland Water District main was constructed there in the 60s, it's very likely that, that all this, because the land pitches in the direction towards the Nun-Such River, it's very likely that this just drained overland and ended up in the river. However, when they constructed the water main, they actually raised the land over the water main, and hence, they trapped some of the drainage in here. There is an existing ditch that runs here and a culvert that crosses that water main, but a large amount of that surface water gets trapped in here, and it's eventually naturalized into a wetland, so we have had that wetland delineated, and those are the extents that are shown on the plan, that's why there is no further expansion shown up in this area. And it is really limited to the upland areas, there will be some minor wetland impacts in the areas where the existing drainage ditch, which is also naturalized, has been flagged as a wetland, and of course, for two reasons, we need to maintain that, one, just to maintain the drainage around the existing community, and two, to capture the water that, that comes off the new improvements. So essentially, this is the new road, this is 20 feet wide, which is what is required for manufactured housing communities. Water and sewer runs down here, there'll be hydrants on it, and what we've shown in blue they may be a little overstating in size, but these are bio retention cells that will serve to, to treat stormwater runoff from the new development. This will create enough disturbance to trigger stormwater laws, so we'll be going through the state for stormwater permits as well as having to meet the town's stormwater ordinance. And that's all a little further down the road, and as you'll appreciate, a lot of these details will get filled in as we progress a little further along, this is a fairly, fairly conceptual level plan that you're seeing in front of you. And so what we're asking for this evening is, is for some input from the planning board and a positive recommendation to the zoning board, so we can proceed forward with this. I'll be happy to take any questions that folks from the board have, and just, I'll leave it over to you for discussion.
Hey, Sandy, we do have an opportunity for public comment on this item, if there's anyone here in attendance that would like to speak on this item, please use the raise my hand feature in the lower right-hand corner of your screen. All right, seeing none, I'm gonna turn it over to the planning board. Roger, do you want to kick off on this one?
I actually, I have a question for the applicant, but I also have a question for Jamal. I'm kind of curious, I did take a ride through this area the other day, and this is for the applicant, I guess. The staff, one of the things the staff recommends is a robust buffering between the, the connector, Scarborough connector, I noticed right through there, that, that area is all wooded right now. What, what plans do you have for, for dealing with the buffering along the connector?
Well, I can answer that in two ways, I mean firstly, we're keen to keep as much of the wooded area around the fringes of the development as we can, obviously. And if you've been down there, it's actually, it's pretty attractive woodland. There will be some trees, and as you'll have noticed, there are some, some very large pine trees in there, and where those come close to, to the proposed expansion, that would obviously offer some, some degree of hazard towards the new houses. And they don't really offer very much shielding on the low level anyway, so we would, we would move towards taking out anything that is that poses a threat to the new development, but retaining as much of the woodland around the edges as we possibly can. I think we will certainly consider, and particularly in the lots, down on this corner of the expansion, we will certainly consider filling in with some new plantings lower in, in the, some more understory type plantings. As you'll appreciate, if you've been out there, a lot of the cover in, in this area and along the woodland is fairly high, so we want some infill plantings along here. And we'll certainly, that's one of the things that we'll certainly look at in, in great detail as we move forward.
Okay, and the, the question I have for Jamal is, I'm just kind of curious, Jamal, Andy mentioned how, how the Scarborough ordinances doesn't line up exactly with the states, and I was wondering if that had to do with the type of construction, or the type of units, for instance, I assume that these new units will be very similar. When you drive in there, when you first go in there, if you take your very first right, those dwellings are different than the ones if you were to go left. They're more, they're more similar to the newer development down at Hillcrest, is that correct? And that's, that's, Andy, that's what you plan to do up at the, the new area?
Yeah, that's correct, I think what you, what you're likely to see, and there may be some differences based on, you know, the lot size and the lot configuration, and people, frankly, people's choices as to what sort of units they want. But if you take a ride around Hillcrest, for example, and you see some of the newer units that are going in there, there's a variety, I mean, some of them are two-story, some of them are single-story, but they're, they're very definitely of the modern era of manufactured housing, and they're very, very efficient, very well-manufactured units and, and very good-looking units as well.
So, my question to Jamal is, what, do we, is there a different definition between the type of structures that are in the original phase of Pinecrest versus these newer, which look more like a conventional home?
Yeah, so Roger, maybe I'll try to jump in and, and answer some of that question. And frankly, maybe the applicant may be even in a better position to answer the difference between sort of the, the newer model units as opposed to what's out there currently, but I think your first question was sort of around, you know, is our zoning out of date with respects to the type of units, and I would say it's not so much around the type of units as we've defined both mobile homes and manufactured housing units, and it's, it's a little bit, as Andy mentioned, I think already, our zoning ordinance is very clunky in that we do allow for mobile home parks in the RF and the RFM district. However, in those districts that we allow these type of communities, our ordinances and density provisions and other things, that's where we don't align with the state regulations, and this is actually an issue that the, the town grappled with, I can remember a number of years ago, I think it was back in 09 or 10, when we did a bunch of rezoning in the RF and RFM areas, and we sort of struggled and grappled with that issue, and ultimately, that didn't get resolved at that time, and it's one that, you know, we, staff is aware needs to get addressed next time, we sort of take a bite at those RF and RFM districts. Within the R2 district where we're at, those type of communities are actually aren't listed as an allowed use, so it makes it actually a clearer pathway for this application, because it is very clearly a non-conforming use, because the type of use isn't overall permitted, and so it actually makes sort of this, this pathway forward a little more clear than even if it were in the RF and RFM where we allow the uses, but yet, our, our, and this is where it really starts to get complicated, where our local ordinances don't align with state statute, the town, staff, planning board, we have to apply our state, our, our local regulations, regardless of sort of what state statute said, and that becomes a, a whole murky area, so fortunately, that's not the type of situation we're dealing with here. And we, as I just said, sort of do have this pathway forward with respect to expansion of non-conforming use, and then really looking at it in terms of, you know, those, those standards with respect to sort of cohesiveness of the neighborhood, if you will. It will come back to the board, it should be mentioned, for a subdivision review, but at that time, because this is in the R2, and, and should it get Board of Appeals approval for the expansion of non-conforming, we won't look necessarily to the R2 space and bulk standards, but what we will look to is sort of the more community-wide standards that are in these subdivision ordinance around the typical things we think about, stormwater, access, fire protection, emergency protection, those sorts of things, so I hope that starts to help address your question in some way.
Yeah. Okay, I'm all set, Nick.
Thanks, Roger, Rachel?
Yeah, actually, Roger was kind of asking the question that I had, and Jay, Jay's answer was, was very helpful. I, I, I guess I, part of my concern was the difference in lot sizes in, in one area of the, of the park, the community, and then in this new area, it appears to be larger, larger lots. And that goes then to, I guess, to the question of, of community, and community standards. I, I guess one of the concerns that I, I have, and it's probably more to the, to come up at the, the subdivision review, is the question of what the topography of the land is around there, because as I looked at the map, it did appear as though this is not on the, I don't know whether it's the north or the west, or whatever side of the Portland Water District, that the lot appears to be in need of a fair amount of grading, and given the sensitivity of the area and the Nun-Such River and the closeness to the shoreline, shoreline overlay, I, I would have concerns. But I, I, as I said, I suspect that that really is not for us at this meeting, but simply to take, at this meeting, to take a look at an expansion of a, a non-conforming use and our request for an advisory opinion. So that's, that's what I'm looking at, those are my concerns, and I would hope that the applicant, should this get back to us, starts to, to consider those, I, I do have a lot of issues around the sensitivity, the ecological sensitivity of that area. I also do think that robust buffering is going to be needed, that Scarborough Connector is not a silent street. And folks, when they move in, I would hope at least have some sort of protection from the, from the noise. That's all I have, thank you.
Thanks, Rachel. Jen?
I just want to make sure I understand the proposed impacts, I guess. It looks to me as though, based on what's shown and understanding that that's, you know, preliminary at this point, and subject to change as you move through your development process, but that you're showing only a storm, an area of stormwater treatment, and perhaps some clearing within the shoreline overlay zone, is that correct? And some grading, probably based on Rachel's comment.
That is correct, and, and maybe I can answer Rachel's comment a little bit there. The land generally slopes actually fairly gently towards the Nun-Such River, down along, along the spine of that new road. And the soil conditions are fairly sandy in there, so we're actually hopeful we'll be able to reuse quite a lot of the upper regions of the soil there. It's all sandy to about four feet, and we're not intending to do much below four feet, and we'll certainly try to avoid any grading any deeper than that. And we'll certainly try to avoid any grading any deeper than that. So there will be, you know, there will be a bit of earthwork to, to clear and to stump the land. We're not anticipating a huge amount of grading on this site. Frankly, we're going to use the, the land the way it is, is the way it is topographically right now and use the grades to our advantage and just slope it down just the way it is right now.
Okay, and so do you, based on that, do you, are you predicting any sort of impact beyond the shoreline, overland zone into the, the resource protection area?
No, we're, we're actually, what, what you'll see there, our intention is, I mean, for one, we, we, we've kind of oversized. In our judgment, we've oversized the stormwater treatment that we need because we wanted to make sure that we leave enough space. So we're not coming back, you know, with a plan that shows further encroachment than what we're showing at this, at this early stage, even though it is a very early stage of the project. So our intention is to keep a buffer of at least 150 feet from the Nunshut River. And it may well approach 200 feet.
Okay, that's helpful. So, so you, you're thinking that you may only develop that lower or in this case, I guess, towards the top of the page, that stormwater treatment area, as sort of a last resort if you need that based on calculations?
I, I think we'll need something in that area. I think generally what we're showing in all these areas is larger than what we're going to need.
Okay. Yeah, I would just think that that, particularly in that area, given its proximity to the other sensitive parts of this, you know, zone and river, you would probably just want to look for the least amount of impact there as possible. But yeah, I would look forward to seeing how those calculations turn out and that's, that's what I had questions on. Are there anything else that has been answered?
Jen, Rick Miking?
Yeah, I don't really have anything, any other questions that weren't already addressed by other members. But I do think that buffering along that connector is going to be, going to be key. Just one real quick question, has this been communicated to the folks there that the, the road there from Topaz Drive that's going to enter into the new development, has those abutters to that road, are they aware that this is in the pipeline? Has that been brought up or would you be, you know, maybe talking to them prior to submitting this to the planning board for subdivision?
I can't answer that question directly because I don't know, but certainly we will. And they'll certainly be aware, everybody will, will be aware that there is some activity going on there. As I say, we, we have done test pits on the site already and we'll be doing more tomorrow at the Portland Water District. I wish I could answer that more directly, but I don't, I don't directly know whether they have been contacted or not.
Okay, well, I, I have nothing further, Chair.
I can jump in if you want about notices. As part of subdivision, the town will notice the abutters within 500 feet. And we did note in our comments that it may require joint review by the South Portland and Scarborough Planning Board. So that's something we need to work with our town attorney on as it comes forward, in terms of notices.
Thanks Jamal.
Thank you. Yeah, I think my colleague, the bulk of this, Andy, is it fair to say though, in reviewing the staff comments, that you're pretty much gonna do your best to kind of comply with some of the recommendations if it does come back to us for subdivision review?
Yeah, I don't think there was anything in there, frankly, that we, that was unexpected to us. So yeah, they're all, they're all topics are on our mind already.
Great. All right. So with that, I mean, I think the general sense, if I, if I've missed read it, please, somebody on the boards speak up, but the sense here is that we would like to see this continue on the ZBA for their review. Giving it a, a warm endorsement from the board to, to get to the next level. Is that fair? Yes, okay. Thank you. Jamal or Jay, do you need anything more formalized than, than that? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, our next item on tonight's agenda is number 15, Meadow Woods Associates LLC, request of site plan amendment review, Storm Road Assessor's Map, R58 Lot 18.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this one is located in the R4 zoning district along Gorham Road. The applicant's proposing to expand the existing parking area on the property by 11 spaces. The proposal also includes a new stormwater element and landscaping. So staff had a few pretty minor comments. One of them was related to the three existing light fixtures that are proposed to be relocated. Staff recommended a, a lighting plan and cut sheets of the fixtures to ensure the proposal meets the existing site plan standards. Staff also suggested some landscaping within one of the islands in the parking area that didn't have landscaping. And finally, based on previous discussions with public safety here in town, the applicant did include an area on the plan identified as emergency access to the schools to the west. And staff has recommended a formal easement be provided as part of this process to help formalize this important connection between properties. And staff did draft a motion for the board's consideration this evening, if you guys get there. Thank you.
Thanks Jamal. And for the applicant, Mr. Berg, is it you this evening?
Sure, it's, so my name's Kylie Mason from Sebago Technologies. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before we get going, I just wanted to say thank you. I know you've been incredibly generous with your time and having these extra meetings. It means a lot for all of our applicants. And with that, I'll try not to take too much of your time. So just quickly, with me tonight is Mr. Berg. He represents the owner or the applicant from Meadowwood Associates. I'd like to share my screen with you really quickly, just to orient you to the plan. So just from a existing conditions perspective, and I don't know if you can see my mouse or not, but can you see my hand on the screen? Okay, so just to orient everyone, this is generally the area that we're speaking of. There's an existing dumpster which you'll see relocated, well, not relocated, but in its exact location on the plan. What we're doing is really wrapping the parking lot, this aisle around, creating new parking over here and a new parking bay in this location, which looks like this. And so what that results in is a net increase in 11 spaces. And that's really just to meet the demands of the current residents in the development. To give you an idea of what this looks like from a street view perspective, I just pulled up Google Earth really quickly. So you could see that turnaround, the dumpster area, the area where the parking will be going. We will be removing these trees and proposing new ones to replace around the dumpster area. And we will lose a couple of these white pines, but largely that is, that is the project. We are providing stormwater on the project. It's not required from a stormwater perspective for a DEP, but we have talked with Angela, we think it's a, a good thing to provide additional stormwater. And we have put that into the plan. In terms of lighting, it is shown on the relocation of the, of the fixtures that is shown in our plan. We're happy to submit what a metrics and cut sheets as a condition of approval if the board is open to that. In terms of the easement, just very quickly, we were showing a proposed connection opportunity here. We would ask that we not make that a formal easement until the town moves forward with that. We would ask the town, take the first step so that we know that the easement would be useful and necessary.
Are you all set Kylie?
I am.
All right, for this, we do have the opportunity for public comment. If you're here in attendance and would like to speak on this project, please use the raise my hand, the right hand corner of your app. All right, seeing that, I'll turn this over to the board. I'm just going to throw this out in general to the big move request with this. And then probably should talk a little bit about the easement in the sense that clarify with staff if the applicant's suggestion is what they've expected for the easement. Kind of holding off until the town indicates one way or another if that's what they want or if the town is already indicating that that's what they want.
So I can jump in?
That to Jay or you jump in?
Real quick, I know that the town and the applicant have been speaking of a formal connection, but I guess, I guess I'd ask Angela, I know she's been working with this a little bit more than me, just if the town would be willing to take on the easement or if should we, if it could be held off as a condition. I don't know what your thoughts are.
I know I met out there, I know Steve Berg is on the call. So maybe he could speak to this a little more. I know I met out there with our deputy fire chief at the time, who's no longer there, trying to figure out emergency evacuation plans for the school campus. And where the middle school and the school set back there, it's pretty isolated in one way in and out, which is a concern for them. So I know we met and Steve was very open to the idea and having that conversation. I will say, it hasn't progressed since, so I understand the requests on delaying until we have a more formal plan. However, I, I guess I would kind of put it back. If Steve could speak to the concerns he might have about formalizing that, that might be helpful.
Sure, um, this is Steve.
Thanks.
Thank you for the board meeting again tonight. Yeah, at the time I met with the deputy chief. And again, we, right now we have an informal bridge that crosses a little drainage ditch that separates the properties where kids go back and forth through the woods to school. And he was, you know, looking in the future, you know, for possible different scenarios. If there was a way, if a more formal roadway or something could, and that's why we showed it. But where there's no meeting road on the other side, or we don't know what's going to come in. Now, we obviously want to work, you know, make this possible. But I also don't want to tie the land down to it without, you know, giving a formal easement where there's, there's, you know, we don't know what we're giving it to at this point. I can make it some sort of condition that so the town, you know, will work together. I don't mean to make up words, but, you know, I just don't want to put something informal there when it just, it'll burn, it'll burn in the property without any, you know, reason at this time. If there's actually something coming forward, we always want to work with the town on those things. Know if I can answer any better than that, but that's for a wrap.
So it sounds like, and I guess I would be in agreement, it's something kind of in between, right? Is there some way to, and that's where I think the planners come in, maybe to come up with some language on what that could look like? Or showing it, say on the plan, but for future discussions or something?
Yeah, it is shown on the plan for future discussion right now.
Okay, and I don't know how you formulate that condition though, so.
I think what we've seen in past, forgive me, I can't remember how it's framed right now. It's been a few weeks since I looked at it, but I think it was something like future potential access. Or I think the way, way we've seen it before might be just to say future easement or emergency access or something to that effect. Just I think clarifying the language just a little bit would be sort of that intermediate step. Recognizing, you know, we, as I think Angela's already said, you know, I think it would be, there's, there are no immediate plans for the town to do anything. But it's really just about securing that future potential. There be the opportunity, as Angela said, to create some type of emergency pathway, whether that be a road, a pedestrian, who knows what that is? There's obviously, as was mentioned, at least some type of water feature to cross, might be some wetlands. It may never be actually feasible to build a full road, but what, you know, what could be done is, is unknown. We haven't explored, the town hasn't explored, explored that fully. So I think maybe just taking a look at the language that's on that plan and doing some tweaking there might be that halfway bridge.
And I would say, I'm sorry. Another thing that would be an opportunity is I think the fire department does seek a lot of grants and opportunities through that. Like if it was through homeland security or something like that, as far as evacuation plans and things, it would be helpful to know that the landowner is supportive of that and, and could maybe help in those kind of applications if they are going for grant opportunities to try to, try to work with us on that.
So I noticed that I remember.
As far as Kylie and Steve, is it, I mean, are you, are you comfortable with some, some language on there saying possible future connection or easement?
Right, so the plan actually does have that listed exactly that way. The note was actually taken, it's a similar note that was applied in Oak Hill for a similar future easement connection. And so we use the same language that was applied at Oak Hill for this project as well. So we could change the potential future emergency access to school to possibly, I mean, it could just be future, take the potential off and call it future. I mean, it's a simple word at it, but the intention remains the same and it is recorded on the plan.
All right, so I guess my next question is Jamal, are we okay on the draft motion on the language was?
I'm working through it. We'll see what I come up with.
I might wonder if the board would be comfortable, if, I think the intent is pretty clear, at least in my estimation, and I think we're very close. If the board's comfortable with staff just working with the applicant, you know, could be just to revise the language rather than trying to have Jamal sit there, try to pay attention to what we're talking about here and wordsmith all at once. Maybe just make the condition a little more general and we, you know, it sounds like if this is the direction the board wants to go.
I saw Rachel with her hand up and Jennifer, so Rachel?
Oops, there we go. Yeah, I, I was uncomfortable with the provision of the formal easement. So I think something that allows some additional negotiation or discovery in terms of whether, whether it's actually needed or not, something that expresses the goodwill of the parties to enter into that sort of a discussion with the town would, would work for me. And if it's a case of the planning board working with the applicant to come up with something that's agreeable to both of the town and the applicant, then I'm, I'm fine with that. I did have a question and as you, as I saw the street view, it looked as though there were mailboxes in the area that you're proposing to put the, yeah, there they are. Are they going to remain where they are?
They are. This, this turnaround actually remains just as it was. And this would actually turn out into it. So it actually, I think probably improves the, the churning radius over here a little bit, provides an alternative path around it.
Okay, thank, thank you. I was, I was not clear on that. I, I have no more questions.
Thanks Rachel. Jennifer?
Um, I was just curious where, so when there were prior conversations regarding this property and emergency access to the school, what was the, where was that intended to go to? Like, it looks, I'm just looking sort of on my own off to the side. It looks like there's a turnaround or a pullout or something on Green Needle Drive, is that right? Is that where this, where the, the other end of said easement would come out?
So this is the development in this location, this is the existing parking lot here. This is the school in this location. So the proposal was to essentially directly connect into the parking lot.
So where is that? Can you, okay.
But if I, if I might, I think during those discussions, and Angela, correct me if I go astray here, I think that the, the fire department at the time, public safety was really exploring sort of multiple options. I think they were looking at the end of Green Needle as well. So this really is, as, as we've already said, there is no defined plan, there's no clear answer. This is really about keeping options open.
Preserving options, yeah.
Discussion is about.
Sure, and I think it's terrific foresight by all involved. Sure, um, and I think it's terrific foresight by all involved, really. My only comment, given that clarification, thank you, would just be that and we've kind of already touched on this, but uh minor wordsmithing to the end, that maybe the option be preserved that this not even necessarily be for emergency access. Understanding a sensitivity to not opening this up for a full um vehicular pickup or drop off, but that there could be a lot of other ways that um an easement like that could be useful to a school site without being just for emergency access, that's all, head, head access or something like that.
Right, thank you.
Can I speak?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, but as I was mentioning before, there currently is a pedestrian path that goes from where we're showing that right approximately there um into the schools, so it's informal, there's nothing in writing. Again, we don't have a problem with that, if we want to do something like that, um, it's more if it was going to be a road, we're a little more concerned.
Sure, that makes sense to me, and um the only, the only reason I mention it is because you know, not saying that this is on the table or anything, but properties do change hands, and while the current program here and property owner is amenable to that type of access without words to that effect, there's, you know, the town could potentially lose that connectivity if the property were to change hands, and I do think, you know, given the, the current use there, I think it's a really important link to the site and something that a lot of our neighborhoods don't necessarily have, so I would just um be in favor of keeping that to whatever extent everyone was comfortable with at this stage in the game.
So if I can ask then, Steve, would you be more comfortable with what Jen is proposing, more of a, say, a ten foot kind of easement for pedestrians at this time and for future emergency access to be kind of determined?
I'd be willing to consider it, we, we do that currently at the West Oaks Apartments. Um, it's, I can't remember the term we came up with, but it's a public walk or private walkway for public use, something along those lines. And yeah, I, I agree with Jen, I think it's great for the neighborhood, having the connectivity, um, you know, because kids will find the shortest path, so even if doesn't, the people living in the apartment, kids up on Maple Avenue with the new walkway can come through, cut through to the back of the school, save, you know, a little time. Um, it's more for vehicle, vehicular, I'd be more concerned, but um pedestrian, I, I think it's fine.
Roger?
Yes, um, I, I have no problem with the conversation as it's transpired so far, but just an observation. Steve mentioned that there's also already a path that the kids use to go through there, is that correct, Steve?
That is, that's correct, yes, Roger.
Um, when, when you first talking about this, I, I envision a, a connector, sort of like the one that's off of um I think it's, it's a Maple Avenue that goes across from uh Abigail, are you familiar with that, Jay? That's like a maybe, I don't know, an eight foot wide path or something like that. But it seems to me, once we get Gorm Road the way we want it, with the complete streets and everything, encouraging more pedestrian traffic, you will have more kids going to the middle school, going through your property, Steve, because it's shorter than going all the way around to is it Quentin, is that what it is? You know, to get up there by library, so. Um, and then the only other, if you're just doing a path, and I don't know if this still pertains, but I know when the middle school was being uh built, um, there, there were discussions about pathways going down to Sawyer Road because kids had already established informal pathways, but it was decided not to pursue formal pathways, because once you do that, you, you, you have to abide by a series of regulations, you know, AD, ADA regulations and things such as that, so just, I don't know if that's, that's still in play, Angela, you know, I don't know. Just throwing out a thought.
I would say if there is a, like you said, a path that's kind of worn and been over time, um, and you're saying you have access rights over it, we can always say that as, I think, once you get in and start improving it, then you probably have to hit standards, um, I would agree with that, as far as like ADA and that such um thing, but as far as just getting, I guess, more formal right, um, I understand, it sounds like Steve's providing that access, but to finalize that, and then say in the future we could say improve it as a pedestrian walkway, I think that's when you get into what you're talking about, Roger, is making it comply with under all the requirements.
I'm awesome, nothing more to add.
Uh, any other planning board comments on this, Rick, everything there? All right. Uh, Jamel, some general language for us to review here real quick?
I think Jay's gonna actually share it.
All right.
I'm getting there in just a moment, are you seeing the motion at this point?
I see, uh I see the first page, can you just cut down to the easement section to see if the language is uh suitable for the parties here at the table?
It does look like the ones that I worked on, so, uh, why don't you get out of it, Jay, and I'll bring it up.
Okay.
Sorry, guys. You guys see this?
Yes.
Yes.
So the the new, new coordinate with the town with regards to a formal connection, emergency pedestrian, et cetera, and the future to the school property to the west as discussed with the planning board? Getting any warm fuzzies on that?
Yeah, I think that uh, that leaves some, leaves the, the flexibility. Um, it allows the parties to reach an agreement.
And and so is, if they hit a stumbling block in there, I, I suspect that planning would elevate it back up to the planning board if uh, or even applicant possibly at that point, if they, they don't see a, an agreement coming to fruition, does that sound reasonable?
That works for staff.
Uh, my, my concern is, is there any time limit for these discussions, or are we talking back to the planning board in four years when something can't be agreed on?
The, the way it reads is this is to be done before the issuance of the building permit.
An applicant, how do you, Steven, and how do you feel about that?
Uh, I think we can work with the town on it.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I think we can work with the town, you know, the planning department to get what they need.
All right, well, that said, uh, I guess I'll read this motion.
Um, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yeah.
Um, I would just like to uh consider, um, there's two notes on here that I think and that would be um note E, the wooden guardrail and other hardscape feature between the parking area and the proposed underdrain soil filter as well as a note indicating when the lights will be dimmed on the site, I think. Um, there's some logistic concerns uh for the applicant that we would prefer not to put up a wooden guardrail or hardscape feature between that parking edge and the soil filter, as well as um uh dimming lights on the site, given the residential nature of it, and believe their preferences to keep the light levels at a safe at a safety level the entire evening.
All right, let's take up those two topics real quick uh with the board. Um, wooden guardrail, can you, can you, uh? I could, yeah, what's, um, so specifically Kylie, what is the uh major concern with the wooden guardrail suggestion?
I think it's just a, frankly, it's a cost and logistics, it's one more thing for them to maintain, it's certainly something that they need to consider, if there is a sign in front of it, as it is already, I believe that note is on there for stormwater uh and for snow plowing to keep them from plowing into the area. Um, I would think that we could probably handle it in the same way, um, with the sign remaining intact and simply adding a boulder to the edge of the parking lot um off the corner there as opposed to a, a formal guardrail.
So a couple landscaping boulders would do the same trick, right?
I think that was the intent of the comment, when you talk about something hard scape is, a lot of times the planning board reviews, people um are putting boulders there in the way so you can't just push the snow directly in, because regardless of what you tell them to do at three in the morning, they're gonna push snow into that.
So applicant, you're comfortable with some landscape boulders there in, in lieu of a fence?
Yes, we are.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I would point out that that's what that actually says already.
Right.
They wouldn't guard rail or other hardscape feature.
Right, but I just want to check to make sure with the applicant that that he understands that, your, your issue wasn't with the comment in entirety, it was just making sure that it wasn't the wooden guardrail that we're comfortable with the boulder, is that correct?
Correct, in fact, I, I would, if at all possible, just to describe that the hardscape feature between the parking area and
As other hardscape feature? Just take out the wooden guardrail?
Yes, please, that was the only request, there's no issue with the intention.
Okay. And then the dimming of the lights, um, now putting lights, it's not necessarily shutting them off, it's just taking them down a level. Uh, do you have concerns at night over there with activity that makes you want to keep them on and brighter than necessary?
Well, I have concerns that, you know, if, if it's dimmed, it'll remove a perception of safety that people feel when they have bright lights. You know, again, we have shields on, so they're not into other people's, you know, um windows and stuff, but I, I just don't feel comfortable being required to dim them. We know when, you know, for people's own houses, that's a choice, we're providing safety for thirty-eight residents, and you know, people's perception in apartments, they want their parking lots to be fairly well lit.
Staff, uh, can I just clarify, is this just a good practice suggestions, no ordinance related?
Um, the ordinance does, you know, suggest to dimming of lights on properties that are on, up for site plan review, um, but you know, staff certainly understands the uh applicant's concerns, so I I'd say it's up to the board on this one.
Thank you, can I have each board member just weigh in on whether or not they should be dimmed? Rick, since you're
Well, I
lighting guy.
I, I'd like to see the applicant uh present a photo metrics to the staff and ensure levels are, before we say, no, you can't dim, I mean, uh, we don't know what, what fixtures are going in there uh and what the photometric spread is gonna be for those, so I would ask that maybe they work with staff, but our ordinance does, does say that uh where possible, they should be dimmed. Um, and uh, I, I, I think I'd be more comfortable with, you know, working with the staff to making sure that yes, safety is, is a concern, but also um energy and um, you know, night sky lighting.
Um, if I may?
Sure, Steve.
Um, again, this is an existing apartment complex with existing light poles. Where I, Kylie can let you know how many were proposed adding, but that, we're using the same exact fixture that we currently use down there, they're all LED lights, very high efficiency. I, I, you know, I believe me, I'm, when I, I'd rather not pay to have lights on, but it's, it's a requirement in you know, apartment complexes, so, um, but again, we're not really adding a lot of lighting to the site, um, and is this, you know, are we talking about the entire site? Or just the, the additional um lights?
Roger?
Yes, um, we, we, so currently, uh, Steve, you don't dim the lights, is that correct?
That is correct, we don't, do not.
Okay, and according to staff, all you're doing, what you're doing is re- relocating three existing lights.
Correct.
You're not adding any more lights.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
I'm inclined to just it, leave, leave it the way it is. I mean, it's, it's working now and I mean, I, I don't see why, you know, I have a lot of respect for Rick, Rick is um his expertise on this, but I, 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 I tend to agree with the applicant in terms of why incur the existing, I mean, you know, additional cost because we're not adding more lights.
Can I ask, um, through the chair?
Yes, go ahead, Angela.
I have, maybe to Kylie, maybe clarify, because um there are three fixtures new shown here. One in particular is within, looks like fifteen or twenty feet from the property line, so maybe that's the one that might be concerned for Rick, and have you guys looked at that and how that kind of plays into the abutting property?
Sure, so I cannot answer that, actually, um, let me share my screen really quickly. Um, I cannot, so, um, so they are actually the three existing fee, uh, light fixtures that we're relocating, so if I were to pull them up here, you could actually see that these are existing light fixtures uh that we'll be relocating, you can see them on the survey and sheet two um of six of your packet. Um, we'll be just relocating the existing fixtures, one of the things that's very interesting is that um the property, the actual abutting property, is a strip of land that was conveyed by this landowner, by Meadowwoods LLC to the town of Scarborough, so it is not actually abutting any residential neighborhood, there is a strip of land in between here that has been conveyed out already to the town of Scarborough. Um, so there is no concern of light intrusion into the residential properties, so we did look at that. Um, and again, they are existing fixtures with house side shields, um, and we, we did not see any concerns initially um of light intrusion.
Thanks, Kylie. It's helpful, uh, Rachel?
Yeah, um, I'm, I'm kind of with Rick, um, they may be the same light fixtures, but uh, they, they are being relocated, I noticed on the proposed uh motion, you have a lighting plan and cut sheets of the existing light fixtures to be relocated, uh, I assume that that's not a problem?
No, we have the cut sheets, uh, we're happy to provide photo metrics, I think the issue is just, and I'll use my own office as an example. For example, there are no lights in that parking lot on right now, and when I leave here, my perception of safety is gonna be very different leaving my office to go to my car this evening, and so I would just state it that way.
And I, I, I understand that, um, and we're talking that the lights be dimmed at some point, not turned off. Um, so, I, I understand your concern about safety, but I I'm not clear um about the concern about dimming the lights at a certain time. Uh, other apartments have that dimming, um, we've required that, and it is suggested. Uh, it actually probably saves money, uh, rather than keeping the lights on full force, so I'm, I'm, I'm clear about about the concern, and um I I'm with Rick, uh, that we, we need some dimming.
Thanks, Rachel, Jennifer?
There we go, um. Can, uh, I just have a question about what percentage of, so obviously the plans that are submitted are with regard to this parking lot expansion, and then on the cover sheet, you sort of have an overall view, um, it looks like there's three or four other buildings as part of the complex that aren't necessarily shown, because they're not as close to the parking lot expansion. But I'm just curious in terms of like, maybe percentage wise, how many light fixtures, how many of these type of light fixtures do you have on the site overall? And so if three of them are being moved, is that half of the light on, the light fixtures on the site, is it ten percent?
Uh, I, I think off the top of my head, I think there is sixteen light poles throughout the property, those include you know, there's one along the road by the entrance to uh Gorm Road, um, there's a park, small little parking lot when you first come in. Um, there's a park, a small little parking lot when you first come in, I believe there's two in that parking lot. And there's another small parking lot that has maybe three in it. This one, which would be a little further away from the buildings, again, part of the reason we'd like to keep it better lit. Again, you know, dimming parking lots, that's just a very, I I know the reasoning behind it, you know, from where the board, some board members are coming from. But I I I think you're dictating other people's safety and I and I it makes me very concerned. You know, again, it has the proper shield, so the, you know, light spillage onto other properties just isn't an issue here. And I find, you know, I find it's very uncomforting to me. What other property owners choose to do, that's their concern. But I I think it's, you know, where you have vulnerable populations living, you know, I don't think it makes sense. People work late shifts, come home, and you have dimmed parking lots. It's not a, you know, as Kylie mentioned, leaving a building or coming to a building when the lights are dim in the parking lot is not a comforting feeling. I'm just not really comfortable.
Yeah, I I understand that. And so just a clarification, because you don't have it open in front of me, is there ordinance language that when the lights have to be dimmed? Or that it's at the discretion of? Somebody else?
Yeah, I can answer that question, Jen. Nick, if it's okay. It it suggested that they that we use timers or something for that effect. I think one of the questions really is my, you know, I haven't seen the photometrics plan. I don't know that staff's seen a photometrics plan, so I think it goes really back to Rick's initial comment, Rick Minkin's initial comment is without knowing. How bright this parking lot is, maybe, you know, maybe once we see a photometrics plan and understand what the what the fixtures are. You know, I think we we certainly hear that the concern about safety and not, you know, we understand about going completely dark. That's, I don't think, the the question for this application. It's really about what is the right level? And maybe the level they have is, you know, already at a at a low enough, it's it's the unknown right now, I guess, is really more the issue. Rather than, again, we completely hear and understand Mr. Bird's concern about, you know, the residents he has living in his complex. It makes total sense, certainly.
Okay, yeah, thanks. I guess then without seeing those photometrics. I would maybe defer to to staff in that case, if that's the way that this is going. So if photometrics are going to be submitted. To the staff at a later date. Yeah, I I think that as written, that's fine, and if there's an issue beyond that, I would. You know, trust that staff would bring it to the board if necessary, but generally the comments about, you know, understanding where the start level is. And then having a discussion from there about both site usage and. You know, other environmental concerns in terms of.
I could jump in, I just threw, just edited condition one B, it's not, doesn't need to be read that way. But I just wanted to throw that out there as maybe a possible solution, Mr. Chair and Board.
Yeah, I I appreciate that because I think here we we should offer a little flexibility, given the applicant's concerns. And and then take them into account. I think the cut sheets are. Are going to help you out when you have a chance to look at it additionally. I'd like to note that F just says you want a plan indicating what time the the lights will be dimmed. It doesn't really clarify whether it's a tenth of a lumen, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't say it was at three. Three AM, I think a flexibility with the way this is written here to kind of try to work this out with staff once they see the cut. That's that fair?
That's fine with me.
All right, great. So with that said, Kylie, are you all set here looking at the rest of these?
That's great. Thank you so much. You've got, you've been very generous with with your comments and time.
So with that, if you could scroll up a little bit for me, thank you. I will move to the site plan amendment titled Meadowwoods Parking Expansion as depicted on the plan set prepared by Sebago Technics dated nine twenty five twenty. With the following findings, waivers and conditions. Findings, the applicant is proposing to expand the existing parking area on the property by eleven. Spaces, both includes landscaping and stormwater management provisions, property is located at sixty two Gorm Road and will utilize existing frontage. Property is located within the residential R four zoning district. Planning board has reviewed the application and supporting documentation. Design of the site plan adequately addresses the site plan review and zoning ordinance requirements for the site utilization and layout, access, internal vehicular movement, parking, pedestrian ways. Landscaping, stormwater management, lighting, architecture, signage, utilities and storage. Waivers, one, proposed parking aisle width of twenty two feet. Conditions, one, prior to issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall revise the plan set to include A, additional landscaping provisions within the western parking lot island. B, a lighting plan and cut sheets of the existing light fixtures. Just to be real, the applicant and staff shall coordinate and whether dimming on the site is appropriate. C, snow storage areas, D, a dimension for the easterly parking side. E, hardscape feature between the parking area and the proposed underdrained soil. Oil filter, I'm sorry, F, the standard site plan note. This shall be approved and approved, reviewed and approved by the planning department. Two, prior to issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall A, address the civil peer review comments in the memo data. Memo from Woodard and Grant twenty two twenty three, I'm sorry, B, coordinate, continue to coordinate with the town with regards to a formal connection. Emergency pedestrian, et cetera, in the future to the school property to the west as discussed with the planning. Board, prior to start of construction, a pre-construction meeting is required. Meeting shall include appropriate town staff, the developer and their site contractor, and is to be coordinated through the planning department. That's the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Rick. Any further discussion? Seeing then I'll call roll. Rick Minkin?
Yes.
Yes.
Rachel Hendrickson?
Yes.
Roger Beely?
Yes.
Nick McGee, yes, sure that is five oh. Congratulations, good luck.
Thank you so much. Have a great evening. See you soon.
You too. Next item on today's agenda is Thomas Gary Uppe and Bethany Francis Frannan request a subdivision. Amendment review for the riverwooden testers map R three lots one seven three two and one seven three three. I I as chair am going to recuse myself from this discussion. This is a neighbor and friend of mine, so I will turn the rest of. The, I, Rachel to run for this part.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Jamel?
Thank you. So this project's in the RF zoning district within the western portion of town. The applicant is proposing to reconfigure the common property line of lots thirty two and thirty three within the existing subdivision. In order to correct an existing property encroachment due to the construction of a shed and fence. The applicant has also indicated that they placed a shed within the twenty five foot wetland buffer. As depicted on the approved subdivision plans and reviewing the public file here in the office. The site is subject to a main DEP permit, which identifies a twenty five foot wetland setback requirement. Staff suggests that the applicant update the board and any correspondence to date with DEP. As the wetland setback and buffer is a condition of the existing approval for the subdivision. Staff has also noted that it appears that the location of the shed will not meet the required fifteen foot side yard setback. Based on the delineation provided on the plans. So staff is not connected with the applicant in regards to the existing DEP permit. So final action should not be taken by the board this evening until correspondence from DEP is provided. Turn it back to you, Mr. Chair, Ms. Chair, sorry.
Thank you, Jamel, and for the applicant. Thomas, is that, are you doing it for the applicant?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Uh, in your discussion, could you please talk about the status of the any main DEP conversations?
I've made a couple of, had to contact them a couple of times. Have got no response on the on-call status people there. I really did think it was a DEP issue, is it?
I'm sorry, there's there's kind of a hiccup.
Do you want me to jump in, Rachel?
Yeah, I I'm hearing some feedback and a hiccup there. Go ahead.
Sure, so yeah, staff did review the file here in the planning department. Can you hear me? And that's the existing subdivision was approved by the main DEP. And in the permit, it requires a twenty five foot wetland setback, which the shed is actually encroaching on. So that's what we're noting on, so that would require an amendment to the existing DEP permit. As we understand it.
But it was my understanding that the twenty five foot setback isn't more of a local zoning ordinance than a DEP issue.
Uh, Jamel, can you respond?
Um, it's it's stated in the in the permit, so that's something that we don't have any control over in terms of that condition of approval from the state.
Okay, I will I will follow through with that too, you know, we'll get a resolution from the DEP in regards to that issue.
All right, thank you. Is there anything else that you want to mention to us?
Well, the only other thing is that I'm not sure. What you have from, you've only got the package that we submitted and since then, we've had the property re-delineated by Mark Hampton, who did the original delineation. And the findings was that it reduced the impact of the buffer down to like two point nine feet of the shed being in there. Nothing like that is shown. And the other requirement regarding the setback. We're looking at a sixteen foot setback around that shed, not, it's pretty hard to tell with the scale of that to get it correct. But I'm going to show you sixteen feet. I can show you my screen and show you exactly that if you'd like to see it.
Yes, I I think the board would. Thank you. Jamel, can you help him share screen?
Are you able to share, Tom?
Give us a second here. How's that look?
Uh, upside down, but yes, okay.
As you can see, the green line is the fifteen foot setback, and I I actually went sixteen foot around the shed. To make sure that we didn't need to set back there.
All right, thank you.
And would you like to see the wetland impact?
Yes, please.
Once again, here's the wetland impact, the new line running through, we're looking at two point nine feet. That corner of the shed that is shaded, about eight and a half feet up this shed line, well thirteen square feet. Total inside that buffer.
All right, thank you. Uh, this is subject to a public hearing. Is there anyone in the public who would like to comment? Please hit the raise your hand button on your screen. And Jamel, I hope you can keep track of who's raising their hands.
I am taking a look for you, Madam Chair, and I'm not seeing anyone as of yet.
All right, we'll give them another fifteen, twenty seconds and move on. All right, here, no, hearing no comments, no public comments, let's go to the board. Jen, would you begin with this?
Um, so do I understand correctly that we do not have the ability to waive? Even a two point nine foot. In infringement on the twenty five foot DEP buffer?
So it's really a matter of, it's not so much whether you have the ability to waive or not. It's the it's the statement from the DEP permit, so it's really, it's not a local requirement. So it, one of the things that the board would be asked to amend is on the local subdivision plan, it requires twenty five foot setbacks. So that was something that the planning board at the time of this application had no recorded on the plan. So that that's what our local amendment would be, but I think that the standing question is, and I think, you know, it might have been mentioned. You know, this was a precursor to our conservation subdivision, you know, this was approved under sort of this precursor language. That didn't have that sort of strict twenty five foot setback that we have today. Um, but it did sort of set up around wetlands protections and buffers for other open space, you know. So again, I think, you know, the the primary question is really, how's the DEP going to react? I think barring barring a DEP decision was certainly, I think, given the modest. Modifications they're looking for probably, you know, inform any local decision, but.
Okay, so. DEP. Will or should weigh in on. Whether or not this constitutes an amendment to the overall. Permit for this site, and then based on that, we would either, we would just tailor any. Approval from the board accordingly, is that right?
Certainly could. Again, you know, it's, yeah, I think that's probably. About right. Again, the board would would need to make a local decision on the on the request, but.
Can I speak? Can you hear me?
Uh, please, go ahead, Thomas.
We've we've looked at moving the shed and trying to alleviate this issue, but we're looking at approximately seven to ten thousand dollars just to move that a little bit. Due to the plumbing, the electricity and everything that's in the infrastructure tied into the pool with that. We will contact DEP. I'm hoping that this doesn't affect our ability to at least get the. Property lines taken care of. This is quite a dynamic project, trying to get leases from neighbors, mortgage companies, things of that nature. And just trying to keep this ball rolling along. That that's where we're at there. I mean, if worse comes to worse, we're going to end up moving the shed, but I mean, I would have thought that. Two point nine feet, but I don't think they're asking for very much. If you'd like us to go to DEP, I will do that route, but I don't know how much time and effort we want to spend with that.
I I believe, I believe what I'm hearing from Jay is that. Uh, the, you actually do need to approach the DEP, is that correct, Jay?
Again, this is part of the standing DEP site law or stormwater permit, I think is actually a site law permit. Again, forgive me, I don't have the file right in front of me, but I believe it's part of their site law permit for the overall subdivision. And again, typically, you know, our our subdivision org talks about having state and local agencies sign off before making decisions. And I do think, you know, one of the things that would be difficult if this board made a decision. And had a recorded plan that was in contrary to a standing state agency permit. That then we have a standing conflict that would probably be more complex than the issue that's before us today. So I think that's where staff's comments, Jamel's comments about having DEP weigh in. To help inform a local decision is really probably the. As far as staff sees it, the the correct steps.
Right, I appreciate that. So what that would mean then is that there are actually two issues remaining before the. The planning board, and the first is whether the new delineation showing a sixteen foot setback. Takes care of the required fifteen foot side yard setback requirements. And whether we're satisfied that that does meet those requirements. And that we also, I believe, agree that the property lines. May be reconfigured as they're shown in the plan. Is that your understanding, Jay, and what's left?
Try to pump the mute button. Yeah, so it does appear that they've now indicated clearly that they're going to meet that standard fifteen foot setback. That's a minimum, you know, space and bulk requirement that, you know, the board has no no discretion with. So that's good that they've been able to address that issue. So again, I think it boils down to that primary question.
And do we need to weigh in on the new lot configuration?
That appears to be fine, all the lots would meet the. That appears to be fine. All the lots would meet the requirements with the reconfiguration as proposed.
All right. Does the board have any other questions? Any questions from the other board members? Roger?
Yes, to the applicant. When did you submit the request to the DEP?
I've called them a couple of times randomly. I'm going to say, as soon as I received the notification from the staff addressing that, that's when I started making the phone calls. I have not reached out to them in the past few days. It's been like once a week trying to get ahold of who I was on staff. But the COVID thing has really hit DEP pretty hard. They're all working from home. Lot luck.
Yeah, that's what I, I just, so basically, just recently, then, you've been trying to reach them?
Ever since I got the recent staff review comments.
Okay.
This was an DEP issue myself.
So it sounds to me like we, our hands are kind of tied until we get a clarification from DEP then.
Are we only tied in regards to the, with the location of the building? And can we get approval for the lot line configuration? And if DEP says we have to move the building, we move the building and we're in compliance. I guess what we're trying to do is not move the building. But, you know, if we have to move the building, I guess we're going to have to move the building.
Yeah, and we're talking about just that one corner of the building that we'd infringed.
Little corner. I can show you that picture again. It's not much. It's 12 square feet, 13 square feet tops. That area right there.
Yeah, the shaded area.
Correct.
Yeah.
If I could cut it off, and I know Tom would probably cut it off, but there's just too much infrastructure underneath there with electrical. That's right where the electrical panel is.
All right. Let me, let me ask Jay, is it possible to bifurcate this? We have a submission that essentially contains three elements of review. We cannot come up with a final a final decision until we hear from the DEP. It appears, and we could take a vote if we need to, that the board is satisfied that the 15-foot setback requirement has been met. I have not heard any objections to the change in the lot lines. It simply remains in the hands of the DEP. Is there any action that we can take tonight to allow the homeowner, the property owner, to go forward with whatever settlement he may need to do in terms of lot line?
Yeah, I do think, you know, you raise a good point that you could bifurcate, as you so aptly put it, the question. Because currently, the shed is in violation. It's one across a property line and within that 25-foot buffer. The request of the applicant and to, you know, of the applicant to the board was really twofold, was about the lot line adjustment and the 25-foot wetland setback. If they're saying at this point, we withdraw the 25-foot wetland setback question and really are just looking for the lot line adjustment, certainly, I think the board could make the motion to approve the lot reconfiguration and leave the 25-foot wetland buffer as it is on the plans. And then that would, the same violation of that condition would be in place, you know. This would just be around the wetland. And essentially, we could, working with the applicant, sort of get, get something on record that, look, we know we have a standing violation. Work through your DEP process, you know, we got to correct it, right? And so we can work to corrective measure if they're able to get a DEP approval to reduce that 25-foot wetland setback. They could come back to this board for that request alone. If DEP says no way, well, then, you know, they'll need to deal with corrective measures, however they deal with that. So I do think the board could deal with just the question of the lot configuration. I think, again, so staff would have to go back and look at the plans that have been submitted. We may need to revise that, the plan that's been submitted, just given some of the notes that are probably on there and clarity of record are really around what's being approved. Because again, really, the two questions were intertwined on the application, I think, in the notes on the plans. But the board's comfortable with just, again, the lot reconfiguration. That's certainly something you could deal with this evening and leave the question of the wetland setback buffer for a future deliberation.
Roger, just, let me ask the applicant if that process or procedure would be helpful? Or do you want to come back with everything at the same time?
On our half, I think that'd be helpful to keep the other parts of this project moving along and regarding getting releases from mortgage companies and things of that nature. My only question is, is if we do go through DEP and they say you're okay there, I guess we could come back to the board and say, this is what they said, and we would ask for your permission to leave the shed there. But if they say that, no, they're not going to allow us to put it there, we seem like we're going to move the shed enough to get it out of that buffer. Is that something that has to be brought back to the board? Is that something that we can handle with Ryan and Code's itself?
If you don't mind, Rachel. Yeah, so if you're going to move it out of the 25-foot setback, that would be just dealing with our code enforcement office. You would, you know, again, presuming the board approves the lot reconfiguration tonight, then I would say there'd be no further action with this board. The only further action with this board would be if you choose to remain within that wetland setback buffer. And again, just to be clear, we aren't actually impacting the wetland itself. It's the buffer. Then, you know, should DEP approve it and you wish to maintain the shed right where it is, then you would come back to the board for that sort of singular question.
Right, Roger?
Yeah, I was, actually, that's exactly what the point I was going to make. If DEP comes back and says they cannot do this, you may end up relocating, you'll have to relocate the shed. And if you relocate the shed, you may, actually may not even need that additional land. Is that possible also?
No, not really. You look at the quiet lot lines, that lot, through the middle of the shed. That line right there here is the existing lot line. To move that shed that much, it's not really feasible. It's just the way the trees are cut around here. It, Tom put it in the best spot he possibly could. Now, and we're going to have to purchase the land to get this lot lines fixed to keep the shed as close as we can to where it is. I think if worse comes to worse, we're going to end up just kicking up that left corner, this corner here, and pulling the shed forward. But we're going to have to disconnect all the, you know, utilities going to it first. It's going to be some work, but we're hoping to keep it there. So we'll look at DEP, but I would like to try to get the lot line issue taken care of tonight.
Oh, okay.
All right. If there are no objections from the board members, Jamel, could you write up something that we can, some sort of motion that we can pass, or Jay?
I have been trying my hardest to write something that makes sense on the spot. So I'm going to share my screen and Jay and Angela and the board. Just feel free to tell me it doesn't make sense. Give me a minute. You guys read it okay? Take your time.
Looks reasonable to me, the applicant. If, if there are no edits or complaints and this is acceptable?
Hold on just a second. Let me just read that. Under your conditions, one comment would be, provide documentation from main DEP indicating that the location of the shed meets their requirements. I think we know right now, the 25-foot requirement is not met. But if they're good with the location, with the 2.9-foot approach into that buffer, are we going to maintain, be able to maintain the shed where it is?
Yeah, that's what the condition is. That's what it aims to say. Basically, if we receive, you know, documentation from them that they're okay with it, we can stick that in the file just so in the future, if you sell the property or not. It's just clear in the record that DEP did approve it.
Okay, is that something that we need to come back to the board? Or is that just something that we can handle with codes regarding getting that letter put in, if it's in our favor?
So I guess I would just chime in that unless the board, so this is where I think it gets a little tricky because we need to take a look at what the, what the recorded plan is going to say, right? Right now, we have a recorded plan that requires a 25-foot setback. So unless this board is willing to approve, yeah, I think there, any reduction that 25-foot setback would have to come back to this board for further consideration unless the board's willing to approve that tonight. But I think part of the discussion has been around the fact that we want to see and understand the DEP's requirements around that before making that approval. So, you know, I do feel there's probably going to need to be some plan modification from what was submitted, just to clarify what, what, you know, that really, at this point, the board's only approving the lot line reconfiguration. I'd almost say that the plan should pull the shed completely off and just have the recorded plan be very clear about, really, the recorded plan is demonstrating what the lot ownership is and what the lot division is. The shed violation is a separate and distinct issue outside of this board's discussion so far tonight, at least as, so far as we've bifurcated the question. So I do think we will need to have before the plan, before this board signs the plan. So just for the applicant's benefit, once the board makes an approval, they still need to sign a plan, and that plan needs to get recorded at the registry of deeds. So I do think that there'll need to be some modifications to that plan that without spending a lot of time, sort of working through the sausage-making process of looking at all the notes on the plan tonight, that staff can certainly work with the applicant in the coming days and weeks to get that, those plan notes revised and then get that before the board for signature, which can be done outside of a meeting. Once the board's taken their action, we can, the board typically signs plans outside of a meeting once conditions are met. So I hope that's providing some level of clarity.
Jamel, I think some of Jay's language needs to be included on that in terms of the applicant working with the planning staff.
Okay. Jay, can you help me out here?
Let's see, maybe just add to the end of that sentence, plan to be reviewed and approved by planning department staff prior to signature by the planning board? Something to that effect. I know the English teacher, Ms. Hendrickson, is biting her tongue.
I'm checking. Checking for the commas, the spelling and stuff like that.
On the spot.
Not bad. It looks, it looks appropriately bureaucratic, so I think if the applicant is, if this is acceptable to the applicant, we can move forward with this part. So we have a draft motion, Riverwood subdivision subdivision amendment three. I move to approve the project titled Third Amendment Subdivision Plan of Riverwoods, proposed by Thomas, Garify, and Bethany Brannon, as depicted on the plan set prepared by Bess dated 10/5/20 with the following findings and conditions. Findings: The proposed third amended subdivision plan includes the reconfiguration of the common property line of lots 32 and 33. The subdivision is located within the RF zoning district and is further identified on the Town and Scarborough tax map as map R3, lots 1732 and 1733. Conditions: One, the existing shed on the property encroaches on the required 25-foot wetland buffer as identified on the main DEP permit for the project. The location of the shed is in violation of the main DEP permit for the subdivision. The applicant shall provide documentation from main DEP indicating that the location of the shed meets their requirements or relocate the shed outside of the wetland buffer. Two, the subdivision plan shall be modified in accordance with the planning board's deliberation. The plan shall be reviewed and approved by the planning department prior to the signing of the subdivision plan for recording. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Jen. Let's do a roll call. Roger Beely?
Yes.
Jennifer Ladd?
Yes.
Rich Meinke?
Yes.
Rachel Hendrickson, yes. And note that Nick McGee has recused himself from this. This is passed unanimously. I hope this enables you to move forward. And we will see you, or the planning staff will see you as you get, start to get this resolved with the DEP. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Rachel. Excellent job, by the way. I'm going to take more time off.
We have to turn this back to Mr. McGee.
All right, next item on tonight's agenda is the Gables LLC request a preliminary subdivision and site plan review for lot two, the Town Center Residential subdivision with the Downs assessors map U39 lot two. Jamel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is located in the CPD zoning district, lot two of the Town Center Residential Neighborhood subdivision at the Downs, along Scarborough Downs Road. The applicant's proposing to construct two 4,513 square foot, three-story, 12-unit residential condominium buildings and one 2,400 square foot, three-story, six-unit residential condominium building. The proposal also includes two parking garages. It'll consist of 16 enclosed parking spaces at the rear of the property. So staff did note that the applicant's proposing a total of 67 off-street parking spaces for the project. And we did suggest that the applicant consider eliminating the six proposed spaces in the parking bank adjacent to the site entrance, given that 15, 57 spaces are required for the project. Staff did also recommend the applicant consider installing a raised crosswalk adjacent to the parking garages, given the street parking lot layout and the potential site conflicts, given the locations of the garages. And staff also noted that there appears to be an opportunity for additional plantings within the southerly portion of the site to help create some more visual interest and buffering between the property and the existing property south of the project within the enterprise business park development. And I think at this point, Angela's going to speak to a few comments about the easements on the property.
Thanks. I just wanted to clarify, I think, more so for the applicant. Because I know the designer and myself went through quite a lot of back and forth during subdivision. Really, my focus is on making sure there's access to the stormwater BMPs and the outfalls associated with them so that they can be maintained in the future. And so it's just looking for a little bit of clarity, which I know that, as I said, Groll Palmer is aware of that concern and trying to get access to those locations and making sure that maybe staff understands a little better about whether we are proposing to amend the easements that were associated with the subdivision or if additional easements will be provided now that we know the layout for that site. Before, it was a blank slate, so we were just kind of guessing at some locations for easements. So we were just kind of guessing at some locations for easements and access points now that the buildings are being cited and parking lot is being formed around it. Trying to figure out, is that just additional easements or is that modifying our previous approvals through subdivision?
Great, thank you. Dan Bacon here on behalf of the Gables LLC. And I also, like other applicants, want to thank the board for all the time that you're spending in this extra meeting. It's super helpful. I know, I know the hours you're putting in, so we're very appreciative. And I'll try to be short and sweet while also answering all the staff's questions and presenting the, the site pretty efficiently here. I'm going to quickly share my screen. And as Jamel introduced, just to orient everybody quickly, lot two, where the Gables is proposed is part of the town center residential subdivision that you reviewed over the course of the spring. This is the remaining lot. In the subdivision, it's essentially across from front runner way along the Downs. So it's the only lot on the, on the west side of the Downs road, which is now well under construction. As the board likely remembers, as part of subdivision approval, we got all the kind of utility approvals, the DEP approval. So the lot is kind of other than site planning and the things that Angela mentioned that Drew will jump in on, essentially approved with those other agencies for development. And at your last meeting, a week ago, this is, this lot was also included in the, the interim traffic study. So there's, there's traffic permitting that's available for this lot as the board was nice to provide that approval last week. So in terms of lot specifics, as Jamel indicated, there's three buildings proposed consistent with the zoning and the master plan. And we've oriented them, oriented them along the Downs road. So very similar to the tandem court project that you saw over the summer. There's two 12 unit buildings, one six unit building. We've oriented them up towards the street for kind of that, that street wall, for that walkable layout and along the sidewalk. So there's sidewalk connections from the building frontages. And then there's, there's also connections to the parking that we've located to the rear. We've designed the one driveway into the site on the northerly end of the site with proper separation from Daisy Cutter Lane, which is the closest curb cut just south on the Downs road. And it provides access that we reviewed with the fire department from that driveway. And we have kind of a front parking area between the garages and the buildings with uncovered parking close to the buildings. And then we have essentially double loaded garages. So you can access garages on the front side. Then there's a drive that goes around to the rear of the site to access the other garage bays. And there's a total of 32 covered spaces and the remaining uncovered spaces. Jamel mentioned, I think these parking, these six parking spaces here is kind of being more than the ordinance requires. We, we actually like the layout and the fact that there is some, a little bit additional parking than, than the ordinance minimums. We envision these to be kind of more extra parking, guest parking that can be on the site. And we find that having a little bit of extra works well for these complexes. And then not relying just on the on-street parking for some guest parking. So we, the on-street parking along the Downs road, we believe will really be shared in the whole neighborhood. It isn't going to necessarily be exclusive to, to this site. So having some extra on-street, excuse me, off-street parking is, is important to, important to the project. In terms of the overall impervious cover on this lot, we're about at 50, 53% impervious cover. The ordinance maximum is, is 75%. So we're, we're well under kind of the lot coverage and would like to have that additional kind of parking area. In addition to that, Jamel mentioned this, this walkway. And we have a crosswalk here that connects, this is really intended to connect folks parking on the backside of the garages and they, they would walk down the drive and then have this, the sidewalk and then a crosswalk to tie into the units. This site layout is very similar to tandem court and many others where there isn't a lot of kind of through traffic and it's just residents. This is a condo project, so owners are going to be living here. In the peak hour, there's, you know, 13 to 16 cars per hour kind of moving through the parking lot per our traffic estimates. So it's going to be a pretty low volume drive aisle. We are asking for, for a waiver to go from 25 foot wide drive aisle to the 24, like we've been doing on a number of other sites. So I think traffic's going to be fairly minimal and driving through very slow. So we prefer not to raise a crosswalk in this context for, for those reasons, maintenance reasons, kind of noise reasons, driving up and over a raised crosswalk. We think it's going to be quite safe. So we prefer not to do that in that location and do other things to, to make sure people are driving through in a safe manner. In addition to kind of those points, Angela mentioned access to an easement to the stormwater outfalls and BMPs. We have laid this out, actually provide pretty good access in the rear here is stormwater BMP that the drive aisle is going to provide good access to. There is an easement in this location here to provide access to that in emergency, emergency situations for the town. There's also an easement along here. I think both of those are per the subdivision plans already, so they're not adjusting those easements. And Drew can jump in it after I'm done to correct me if I'm misstating. So these easements are kind of per the approved subdivision plan to provide access to this BMP and also to this outfall. And Angela, if you have more specific questions, I know Drew can answer those. The one easement that, that is changing location from the subdivision plan is through the center of the site. So we contemplated that perhaps the layout of the, of this site would have a driveway that would line up with Daisy Cutter to create a four-way intersection. So we initially provided an easement in this location that we're eliminating because of this layout, the building being here and the driveway shifting over here. So there is a shift in that easement to go in this location instead of here, if that, if that helps. And Drew, maybe at this point you can chime in to, to correct me if I misstated anything.
Yeah, thank you, Dan. Drew Gagnon with Goral Palmer. Now, you said it just about right. So we really have a combination of the existing easements that are on the site and we're adding to them. And like Dan mentioned, we're just moving the, the simple access easement to where the actual access drive is and to give the town rights to get around the site and to the stormwater BMPs. So the infrastructure and the stormwater management ponds all have existing drainage and maintenance easements. It's just simply the access to get there, which is what we had discussed during the subdivision approvals. We weren't exactly sure where, where this lot was going to lay out during that time. At this time, all we're proposing is moving the, the, the access easement to get to the stormwater BMPs and still providing all the other easements that are for infrastructure that's in there.
Thanks, Drew. And we can clarify if there's questions during board discussion, staff questions. This plan is the utility plan. As I mentioned, utilities were generally laid out as part of the overall subdivision plan. Since that time, we've gotten Porton Water District approval to provide public water service to the, to these three buildings. We also have the sanitary district approval in place for this entire site and the flows, the wastewater flows for, for the site. In terms of a landscaping plan, we have a robust landscaping plan that provides, that really kind of complements the, the town center residential subdivision landscaping plan with street trees along the Downs road. And we've provided additional plantings around each building, some trees around the parking area. Staff did mention, you know, potentially providing a bit more buffer to the adjacent site and enterprise, the veterinary clinic, which is just off the screen here, this slot here. So we can work with staff on, on locating some additional buffering there while also making sure we, we don't infringe on this, this easement here. There is a stormwater pipe that connects the Downs road and lot one in the project to this stormwater BMP. So I think we can accommodate that and kind of thread the needle on providing some additional plantings in that location. But otherwise, this is the overall planting plan. And we're using similar architecture to tandem court with a different, slightly different color scheme. We're doing sort of a charcoal gray buildings with Brunswick darker gray, if you will, in the central elements of the larger buildings to, to have really a transition from tandem court to the other areas of the project, to hay loft apartments and provide similar architectural look in the same kind of family. So this gives you a sense of the perspective from the Downs road and the, the overall aesthetic along the street and in the buildings kind of look and feel. So that's, that's trying to be brief. That's, that's our presentation for this evening on, on lot two in the Gables. This is both a subdivision and a site plan. So it's a two-step process, being a subdivision, given the, the number of dwelling units in the project. So this evening, we're requesting preliminary approval so we can continue on towards the final. And certainly would like to work with staff on addressing some, any final details prior to the final submission, final approval and also hear, hear any board comments and address your comments to the best of our ability. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chair, for questions.
Stan, appreciate it. If you are here in attendance this evening and would like to speak on this project, please use the raise my hand feature in the bottom right hand corner of your app. All right, seeing none, I'm going to turn this over to the board. I gotta, I'll stop a little bit here. Angela, the first thing I want to know is whether or not the explanations that you received on the easements and the clarifications helped with some of your concerns and with what you're seeing.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to see, I guess, a written response and then showing where that additional easement is in the back. I think it's also part of the comment was about making sure, like, the master homeowners association has, who is going to be the ones maintaining it. So it's not necessarily just the town, which it's great. The town has some access rates in case the road, which we will potentially own in the future, starts having drainage issues that we can get in there in an emergency situation. But also making sure you have, and I don't know how the structure is of that. I think that was part of the comment too, is about making sure the homeowners association, the master one can, can control that as this stormwater coming through the site is from the larger subdivision as well. So I guess I'm, I'm not concerned. I think between Drew and I, we can figure out the, the details.
Thanks, Angela. You know, for what it's worth, on the larger issues, I'll just weigh in and say that I think the extra off-street part in my line of work dealt with layouts like this in condominium life, the extra parking spaces actually makes sense. Seen them fully utilized with off-street parking before. I think it also provides enough opportunity to leave some of the spots available to other people in the neighborhood, the, maybe even guests or visitors to the area. So I'm okay with the additional parking spots as presented here. And then as far as the walk, I also agree, I think with the applicant, I'm not 100% sure it's necessary there. Again, going back to some of my professional experience, I've actually had association remove or unwillingly, their, their snowplows have either removed it for them or the residents have, you know, voted to remove them. It's more of an annoyance and anything, especially kind of in a parking lot where you're not going to really see a whole lot of through traffic, okay with, you know, just the marked pedestrian walkway rather than a raised one. So as far as general comments on those items, I don't, you know, I think if I heard correctly, you, you were on board with requests from staff. Is that accurate? Yeah.
Landscaping? I think you broke up a little bit.
Yeah, the buffering, yeah, the additional buffering and landscaping.
Yeah, we're happy to work with staff on the right planting location for that buffer. That makes sense. And Angela, just to follow up on the association docs, it is set up that way, but we can review that prior to, to the next time in front of the board to make sure it's covered.
Great, thank you.
So I think they covered the big points, at least from my perspective. Let's see if there's any other comments, questions from the board? I'm scrolling through, so keep your hand up for me. Thank you, Rachel.
Yeah, I had a question for staff in terms of the number of actually one, two-bedroom apartments, condos that there were, I think that's what I'm looking at in here. Oh, the bedroom count, the buildings two and three. I'm, I'm a little confused. According to this, the staff comment, it appears that the bedroom count for buildings two and three, including 12, include 12 two-bedroom apartments, not 11 two-bedrooms and one one-bedroom, as the plans depict. Well, the plans do depict 11 two-bedrooms and one one-bedroom. So could somebody help me with my confusion?
I'm happy to, if you want, because we, the, each 12 unit building has 11 two-bedrooms and one one-bedroom. And the six unit building has five two-bedrooms and one one-bedroom. The architect mislabeled, I think, a few of the one-bedrooms. So they're designed as one-bedrooms. I think there was a two where there shouldn't have been a two.
Okay, thank you. I, I, because I had, I had looked and I had counted and noted that there was basically the, the package room in each of the building, which took away one of the bedrooms. Right. And that was from a lesson from prior, prior plans. So I probably didn't even look to see that they were, it was labeled as a two-bedroom because I had read it as a one-bedroom when I looked at it. So appreciate that. I do have a comment about the architect. It is, it is, again, it is very in keeping with the Downs. It is good architecture. It's modern. I would simply say that at some point, there's a lot, or too much of a good thing. This is now the third plan that's come before us with this type of apartment. And changing the color is good. It might be that changing the colors even a little more dramatically than, than your planning is very helpful to provide some variety. We've gotten comments in the past about the number of white buildings, white blocks along the housing leading into the Downs, the initial housing. And I'd like to make sure that we don't have a lot of comments about, well, now we have three large developments that all kind of look the same. So I just, you know, lay, lay that out as something for you to consider. If there's additional way to make a distinction with these buildings, it would be helpful. The, the buildings themselves are well-designed, the apartments are great. I like the storage areas. I think people are going to really appreciate living here. They're going to do the, do the Downs crowd. But just remember that at some point, But just remember that at some point, we've seen enough in these gables, these types of buildings. Is there any place making here?
So the we've designed the, I was going to go to the landscaping plan here. This best shows it. So we've provided some sitting areas on both the front and the rear of each building along the walkways for more kind of public outdoor space and sitting. And then we provide kind of these landscaped areas for the more private outdoor space for each unit. And then each of these buildings is kind of tied into the, to the sidewalk and the multi-use path. That's what this is here, you likely remember from town center residential approval, that this connects up along the Downs Road to future phases. So it's a multi-use path and also connects over, this is right across the street from Front Runner and the sidewalk system that goes up Front Runner and connects into the place making in the Wetland Park area, which is off the screen, but it's really only a block up from this site. So we have both onsite, some place making and then strong connections to the rest of the project.
All right, it just looks to me as though there might be a little space to be never clear whether it's north or south, but to the, the bottom building, the lower building. Yeah, and a little bit to the left. Is that some space right through there? That's the potential to put a couple of conversation area there?
That's an area that we're thinking about providing some additional, like a few additional trees or landscaping per staff's comment. So we can, we can look at that between now and our next submission back to the board.
Yeah, I, I think the area does need more trees, but I think it might also be possible to set up. But it's what you could call a conversation area with a couple of benches in them, in among the trees. So I'd like you to take a look at that. People will go on the trails and they, they will walk around, but sometimes they'll just want to sit right near their building. So that would be, that would be helpful. I think, was there anything else on the comments that you wanted to respond to? I did notice that the road impact fee assessment should be coming and the site distance assessment for the proposed driveways, all of those are going to be coming with the next.
Yeah, actually, the, we've, since we received staff comments, we have calculated the impact fee and we can get that to, to the peer reviewer. I think the submission did include that other information, but it may have been in a place that was difficult for the reviewer to find. In terms of the site distance that was in the submission, and I think the other comments by the, the traffic engineer were in it, but we'll get it to the top of the, on the first page and work with the reviewer prior to your next review. So it's, it's not overlooked.
Okay, thank you. And that's a good job.
Thank you.
Jen?
There we go. Sorry. First of all, I just have a question. Can you hear me? Okay. I just have a question about the garages. Are those? Is there, is there a solid wall in between those two bays? Or if someone parked on the, the backside, are they able to walk through to the front?
No, there is a wall between the, the bays. So those are separate bays to be owned by separate residents. The pedestrian connection is only outside. So you would walk using this sidewalk and crosswalk to get to your unit if you have, if you're, you know, parking on the backside of the garage.
So similarly to the other project too, where there's like independent overhead doors for each? Like, are they that separate?
Yes, yeah, they're fully enclosed garage, garage bays. Yep.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying. I do not have any issue with the waiver as proposed. The on the topic of parking, you know, I'm I think it's interesting to, you know, where this, where all of these projects are new. Part of me thinks that we should, you know, if there's any opportunity for sort of a partial build-out or for prepping some of the base materials for that auxiliary parking, but not fully finishing it in case it's not needed. Just because it would be a shame to, you know, put in the 10 extra spaces here and 10 extra spaces on, you know, other individual pieces of this without fully knowing, you know, how all the pieces interact and what that means in terms of parking demand. I do like the idea of the on-street parking here as an opportunity to provide guest spaces or deliveries or whatnot for these buildings and also to just kind of break up the street treatment a little bit through here. I think that is a good idea and I hope it's utilized. On the other hand, I've lived in an apartment complex where there was nowhere for people to park as a guest. So that's frustrating too. I, you know, I guess we do set minimums for parking and you're meeting the minimum. You know, I, I guess I would, I would like to see, you know, a little bit more justification for those or what, you know?
And I can speak to the on-street a bit. So one of our concerns, if you will, is these on-street parking spaces are likely to be used as much or maybe more for the cottages on the green across the street. So one of the, one of the challenges for, if you can remember, not, maybe I'll go back to this, let's see. This is probably better, more helpful. So we're talking here, these, these parking spaces are here. They're right across from these homes here, particularly the single-family on the green, those cottages on the green. There isn't on-street parking really dedicated to those. And the guest parking isn't, it's pretty limited for those lots. So we think that the ones in front of Lot Two will likely to be used for those as well. And this is all kind of new and we're all kind of learning to see what is the, kind of the, the parking demand. So we didn't want to rely entirely on those on-street parking spaces for the Gables and felt like there's an opportunity where we're way below the impervious limit, like by 25% on Lot Two and felt like it made sense to provide a little bit extra parking onsite for guests for the Gables so that these, the Downs Road on-street parking is more of a shared for the entire neighborhood. So that's really why we're doing it. And we think it, it makes sense overall to kind of have that quantity of parking and, and to provide these onsite to, to have less kind of reliance on the on-street only for, for this particular site.
How's that working with the, the residential portions of the project that are currently built out? Do you have, you know, is there extra parking that's being used? Or is there a demand that you're aware of that's not being met in that way?
You mean in Phase One?
Yeah.
I think there's been, I mean, in Phase One, the single-family homes didn't have dedicated guest parking because we didn't have, it's a bit different layout and didn't do that. And I think that's been one of the things that's been desired for this next phase is to have a bit more guest parking, overflow parking, et cetera. So, you know, a lessons learned kind of thing from, from staff's perspective is, is to have some of this dedicated guest parking. So we're trying to make up for maybe some parking pinch that we have in, in that first phase, particularly around the bristmill and the apartment section of the project.
Okay, that's not to beat parking to death, that's just one of my questions. I do like, I, I appreciated Rachel's comment about both trying to squeeze in additional trees, but also some place making in that southerly, southeast early corner there. Yeah. I do think that's a good idea. And I'm sure that you have, you know, you have creative team on staff that will come up with something of interest there. I don't think I have any other, too many other questions. As long as Angela and the rest of staff and the board are all set, working through some of the other stormwater access issues. Yeah, no, I think this looks good. One other comment, just formality more than anything. I, without all the other hard copies, I don't keep the hard copies. I think Rachel does. Rachel, you probably have such a library by now. But it was a little bit hard for me, just kind of off the cuff, to place this lot in context with the rest of the development, particularly with what's been designed, I will say. So, for example, you're, this is a little bit small, but thank you for pointing out that this is across the street from single-family homes. But so that was, it was a little bit tricky to, just to remember that in terms of how this sits contextually with some of the other pieces of the project. And I know there are so many layers within which you could provide us 10 graphics every single time with like, here's where it sits in Scarborough in general, all the way down to, this is what's across the street. But just in this case, because we were seeing it for the first time, it was just a little bit tricky. But thanks for pointing that out, at least in your presentation. That's all I have.
Roger?
Sure. Dan, could you refresh my memory? What, what are the colors of tandem court buildings?
Tandem court's a darker, I would say a darker gray.
What is this color? This looks like it's gray.
A lighter gray.
This is, oh, it's, so they're both gray, one's darker than the other?
Yes.
Okay, and what is haloft?
Haloft is a blue. The majority of the buildings are, I would say, like a medium blue. I don't know the exact description. And one building has, in that first four commercial space, has white siding. But the majority of those buildings are, are blue with white trim. So they look good. And they're also a different sized building dimensionally. They have a different, those are 86 feet long, these are 104. And there's some different architectural components to those in addition to color. The apartment.
Now, I think the buildings look, look good and everything. I just, I just wondered about a little bit more variety, that's all. I, I think the buildings that Rocky has built over there at Carrier Woods look pretty attractive. And I, I think, now that's, that's tandem court right there, right?
No, this is, this, this is
That's this one?
Gables, tandem court, they're darker color than this.
Oh, okay, all right, okay, all right. All right, I won't dwell on that. Just another thought, down behind the parking garage, isn't that where there's going to be a Willowbrook bike parkway or something down there? Wasn't it, am I incorrect to pop that up? Wasn't, wasn't it supposed to be designing some sort of a a little parkway or something along Willowbrook?
Oh. Maybe this plan that, that we were discussing, that's, that's more zoomed out. This is the lot here.
Yeah.
And we have a, there's a multi-use path that starts right in front of this project that was approved and it's now under construction. That goes up and follows the Downs Road. And it's a tree-lined boulevard with that pathway. And it's, it parallels Willowdale Brook, which is right here. And otherwise, Willowdale Brook is, is, is buffered.
Off-street property?
So if that's what you're thinking of, Roger, and then that will continue into Town Center North, which is off the left. And, and we reviewed that extensively as part of that subdivision, where that multi-use path continues all the way up to Center Street.
Okay. All right. Got into parking. I, I think condos or apartments need to have enough parking because people typically do have company and they do need to have, find a place to park. People who are, who are living there get annoyed when some guest goes and parks in their, their particular parking spot. So I, I don't have a problem with the parking at all. I, I think everything's fine. You've answered a lot of questions. As long as Angela's satisfied, I'm happy.
Thanks, Roger. Rick Minkin?
One of the beauties of being towards the end, a lot of questions have been asked and, and good answers have been provided. I don't necessarily have a problem with those additional parking spots. The impact on those could be mitigated a little bit if we chose to maybe do some, some sustainability efforts in these buildings. It'd be great if we got less combustion in these buildings, maybe offering zone controls with variable refrigerant flow systems for heating and cooling, as well as maybe providing opportunities for the condo association to be able to elect to have community solar or something like that. And with the garages there, it might be a nice opportunity to have lay some piping or the groundwork for providing some renewable energy opportunities for, for those residents that choose to live there. Those are just some thoughts that I have. Would love to see, you know, a, a little bit of the, the sustainability impacts that modern building technologies now offer and see if those can be employed in, in this type of setting. I, I think with condo association makes a nice way of providing that, that flexibility. The lighting plan looks well-thought-out, wall packs are, are there. And, and I think even with the off-street parking, there provides enough light and controls of those lights are, are part of the plan here. So this is a nice-looking project. I, I just would emphasize the value of being a good partner in, in the sustainability of our community. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions from the planning board? Rachel?
Yeah, it's not a question, but I just realized I didn't say anything about the parking. I, I have no problem with that parking. I, I would suggest that you could perhaps put, sign it for visitors and that way it would be kept clearer for, actually for visitors to come in. I am a little, I guess I'm a little concerned about the length of the parking across the back of the building. That's, what's that, 24 spaces? That's, what's that, 24 spaces? Uh, and the, the back, is that 24?
Uh, uncovered here along, um, I believe it is. I believe you're right.
Okay, that's that's a pretty big run of asphalt. Um, I, I, I guess, um, one thing that, that you might want to take a look at is a couple of islands or an island in between each, each, uh, each building that, um, when people look in between the buildings, they're not looking out into asphalt, but they're looking into as kind of an extension of, of the, the grass and the landscaping in between the buildings. Uh, that's, that might be a way to kind of make that a little, little more gentle, a little less stark, uh, and then add the, the six visitors and you're, you're in good shape. Thank you.
Thanks. And so, so we do have, um, the app applicant is requesting pre, uh, subdivision and site plan approval this evening. Uh, just quick poll of the board. Do we think we're, we're at that point here, uh, based off of what we've seen and, uh, based on the discussions?
We're seeking preliminary, just to be, to be clear, when you think we're
Correct. Yes, preliminary.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, see some nodding heads, I think. I have to scroll, so you're going to be patient with me as I search through. So nod your heads longer, please. Thanks. All right. Um, so with that, I'll, um, I'll make a motion to, uh, grant preliminary subdivision and site plan approval for the Gables LLC, lot two of the town center residential subdivision.
Second.
Thirty-nine, lot thirty-two. I'm sorry, lot two.
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion on this? Okay, I'll do roll call. Rachel Hendrickson.
Yes.
Roger Beely.
Yes.
Jennifer Land.
Yeah.
Rick Minkin.
Yes.
Nick McGee. Yes, show that five zero. All right. Thank you and good luck. We'll see you again. All right. And Rick, based off of your comment that you liked going last, so you didn't have to talk much. Guess who's going first on this next one? Next item on tonight's agenda is Dana Fortier requests a subdivision amendment review for the intact subdivision assessors map R93 lot thirty-six. Jamal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, this is also located in the RF zoning district, um, south of the Pleasant Hill neighborhood. Yep, can't proposing to expand the approved building envelope on lot one within the existing subdivision. Uh, so the existing subdivision does include building envelopes, uh, most of which are reduced in size, uh, throughout the development. So typically reduced size envelopes such as these are approved to limit the total amount of disturbance for a subdivision that needs to be treated by a stormwater management system such as this one. Um, and in reviewing, reviewing the file here in the office, uh, the site is subject to a main DEP site law permit. And that permit references that areas outside of the approved building envelopes will remain undisturbed. So staff has suggested that the applicant, uh, provide an update to the board and any correspondence to date with DEP as the approved, uh, building envelopes on the plans is a condition of approval for the subdivision. I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Jamal. And for the applicant, uh, Dana Fortier, Kylie Mason?
Yes, uh, and with, with me tonight, I do have Mr. and Mrs. Fortier, um, uh, who are the homeowners. So just to give everyone a brief update, um, Jamal, if you wouldn't mind, um, I've asked for another copy of the order, but I guess I'm not seeing the restriction, uh, for clearing on our order. If you would, if you have a copy, if you wouldn't mind, um, pulling it up, I'd be grateful. Um, I did actually, in looking at it again, I sent an email over to DEP asking for a different copy. So, but, um, just kind of giving everyone an orientation, this is the approved subdivision plan, um, that was approved in 1996. Uh, since that time, the lots have been developed. Um, if you were to go there, um, you would see, you know, something pretty typical within Scarborough. Uh, you can see there's variable lot, um, sizes, but also variable building envelopes. And really what I recall from our interaction was, uh, there was a speculation that, um, back in the nineties, you might see subdivisions approved this way in order to minimize their stormwater responsibilities through DEP. And while we're, um, speculating that and accepting that as the description, um, in our time meeting with staff, um, we haven't seen anything, um, documented on the plans that describes that. So what we had talked about with staff at the time was, and this is the lot we're talking about here, was that, um, to address that concern that any development that happened on the parcel as part of this acceptance would, um, essentially receive stormwater treatment. So in the case of the shed, um, an acceptable BMP for DEP would be to provide a drip edge, a stone drip edge around the, the reconstruction, and we are proposing that. Um, so this whole, um, lot amendment is being put forward simply because, uh, the Fortiers would like to build a shed, um, that could add some storage on their parcel. Um, they, uh, learned of the boundary, um, or the lot, the building lot, uh, envelope, uh, when they applied for their building permit. And so working through the survey to understand where their lot, their lot and their building envelope was, um, we discovered the, the historic plan. And so what we're proposing is to bring the lot up to the current standards within the zone so that they might build their shed and just have a lot that meets the current zoning. Um, and then just to give you a picture of the 12 by 20 shed they're proposing, um, it's a very small, very attractive shed. Uh, it would fit well within the lot. Uh, you can see that these are large generous lots, um, over an acre or more, some of them in the six, uh, plus range. To give a, just a quick summary of my understanding from DEP, uh, because this is a site law permit, um, the new exemption does allow for clearing. Um, the amendments to a slow to permit are actually not for, uh, clearing of vegetation, but rather for the creation of, uh, impervious area. So area not re-vegetated. And so as I understand it, they would be within the, um, exemption rules at DEP for site law. With that, um, Dana, I didn't know if you or your wife would like to present anything.
Yeah, no, I appreciate, uh, appreciate the introduction there, Kylie and the information, um, and appreciate the, uh, uh, planning board's, uh, work. I know you guys have a very full agenda, so we appreciate the combination. Um, as Kylie mentioned, we're, uh, looking for a simple, it's a 12 by 20, uh, garden shed. And, um, uh, you know, obviously, um, I've gone through a fair bit of gyrations here to put the garden shed in. And, uh, a little bit of a process, a fair bit of expense, I think much more than we anticipated. Uh, just to, to get the shed in. I, I think the, the, um, you know, the DEP, uh, you know, restrictions are, are probably, um, new news as of tonight. So, um, I think that Kylie, you mentioned this may be, uh, something that's handled, uh, through an exception process. That's, that seems to be fairly straightforward, but, um, uh, I think, you know, I'm hoping this is a fairly straightforward project. Um, again, it's a temporary building, movable building. It's not a, uh, not a shed on a concrete pad, it's on a gravel pad. So, uh, that, you know, appreciate any, uh, comments or feedback.
Thank you. At this time, we do have the ability for a public comment. If there's anyone here that would like to speak on this topic, please use this. Okay, seeing none, I want to turn this over to the board. Rick Minkin, as promised.
Uh, just a couple of questions. Are you going to run power out there?
Not currently. Um, we may, uh, at some point in the future, um, you know, to have some lights. But, uh, not currently planned.
Not, not writing the plan, so there would be no lighting or anything like that going on on the outside of the building.
Just to store bikes and things.
What's that?
Just to store bikes and kid stuff.
Get them out of the garage, right?
So we can work out in COVID. Yeah.
No, this seems pretty straightforward to me, Mr. Chair. Um, I don't really have any, any concerns with this. You know, I know our, our able staff, Shepherd C sings through and talks with the applicant and, uh, it's before us now. Um, it looks straightforward and I think, uh, it looks pretty good. I like the, uh, I like the rendering of the, of the shed going out there. And, uh, I think this will help the, the applicant and, uh, enjoy the, as she says, the COVID times and be able to work out. Uh, who knows where that's going to, how long that's going to last, but, uh, um, I'm okay with this.
Thanks, Rick. You're on mute, Roger.
Okay. I'm sorry. Um, is this, is this a similar situation to Riverwalk? Is that what, Riverwoods, I mean, the only thing where this has to go through DEP?
So, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll just jump in. I think, you know, I think when, I guess Kylie mentioned, obviously this, this plan, like many, it's always hard to try to understand what the planning board's, um, position was 25 plus years ago or so, looking at, um, subdivisions that have these large lots and sort of these, these unconventional building layouts where, you know, there was a 15-foot side yard and your rear yard setback back in the mid nineties. And so what, what sort of was happening at the time of this planning board approval? And so that was part of the due diligence that we were doing was going through the file as we were reviewing this application. And that's where we came across the DEP. Uh, again, can't remember offhand. I don't have the file in front of me, so I can't pull it up and, you know, show it to folks. But we don't have an electronic copy. This is a mid nineties, but we could certainly scan it, um, file, but it's, uh, referenced the maintaining, um, the, the buffers as shown on the plan. So I think that's where, as you just said, Roger, this is similar to that where there is a standing DEP permit that we were able to find on the file.
That's not recorded. That's, that's not recorded in my deed. So I, I think we have a discrepancy there between what's recorded and the deeds and, um, you know, there's putting in, I think what is an unnecessary restriction on my lot, um, you know, for, for something that, uh, you know, really is, you know, the, the DEP, if, if we want to put, we want to talk about putting a condition in there for addressing the drainage, then great. But, uh, you know, I think we just looked at some projects. There's a project actually directly across the street from me at two Pendale Point Drive. Uh, it's a six-car garage that was built to two-story, six-car garage, uh, permitted and built on that lot. And, um, I'm fairly certain it's well outside of the building envelope. So it's, uh, the lot, uh, number 10 there on the plan that's in front of you. So I, I think we, you know, I don't feel that I'm asking for anything unreasonable here. I've spent over $3,000 going through the process to get this information to the planning board. Tried to, uh, be a, an upstanding citizen and go through the process of getting a permit, uh, and then had to go through the process of rezoning my lot, um, all for putting in a 12 by 20 garden shed. So certainly asking for some relief here, um, and, uh, some sense of understanding, you know, I can understand and work with what, uh, I can, you know, what is a clear issue, but, um, there isn't clarity around why something exists, uh, or what I should address, and it's just difficult.
Actually, I have no problem with the shed. Um, it's just the, um, technical requirements, whether this has to be cleared with, um, corrected through DEP. That's, that's my only
I guess, how do we get clarity on that? Because when we, we've been, I guess, dealing with this since July and, and Jay, it sounds like tonight you, you said it somewhere, but you don't. Uh, how do we get that documented?
If I, if I might, um, I think if I, if I could add some clarity here, um, typically a buffer, uh, through DEP, if it was described as a buffer, would actually have, uh, a deed and an easement requirement that it would actually have to be pinned out in the field. Um, I, I'd be happy to look at, at this with staff to see if it was described as a buffer or simply, um, if it was just one of the standard conditions that show up in a DEP order that areas that were showed not to be disturbed would be left undisturbed. Um, but as I described underside location, um, I believe it's section 388. That exemption does allow for, um, for additional development to occur in a site location of development permit. Uh, and the clarifying component of that is that it's, um, disturbance not re-vegetated up to a certain amount of square footage. And so because this is not, um, any clearing would not be an issue of re-vegetation, it would be completely vegetated. I think we're focusing really on, um, allowing their lot to meet, um, zoning standards and then, uh, to place the shed, which certainly would fall within, um, the impervious thresholds. And then to the point that we've met with staff, uh, we have provided additional stormwater treatment, which would meet any of the, um, you know, speculation that we had that there was some sort of stormwater, uh, component to it. But without seeing the exact order that, um, staff is looking at, I would like that clarity. And as I said, I did reach out to DEP, um, the order we had did not, um, talk about any, any vegetated buffers, uh, specifically. So I think if there's a, there's a document out there, I'd certainly like to see it.
I'd just quickly ask a question there to clarify something as well. Is it my understanding that if the shed was being proposed within the original building envelope, this really would be an issue of understanding?
Right. We would not require planning board action at that time. It would just be a simple building permit process through the code office. Correct.
Right. Then since it's outside of the building envelope and for whatever reason, the developer at the time.
Right, so
For the time requested, this envelope must be a certain way, right?
My house is set so far back on my, um, on my line that putting my shed in my backyard, uh, even if it was against the back end of the, the building envelope, would put my shed almost right at the bottom of my deck stairs.
Yeah, I think, um, you know, just for what it's worth, I mean, I don't think anyone here on this board enjoys the, uh, the process that our, and sort of go through in some of these situations for sheds and, and whatnot, seeing as this is the, the second one this evening. Um, and we've seen them before too. Um, and it's, you know, it's kind of a sad commentary on sometimes and how, how we can get too ahead of ourselves and, 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 uh, saving worlds. And then at the same time, forget about, you know, some of the common sense elements of, of planning. Um, so, uh, with that though, I don't, I don't want to occupy an immense amount of time here talking about, uh, the shed. As far as reasonable next steps, um, are we in a position, uh, to kind of offer something similar to what happened earlier earlier this evening? We can work through some sort of conditional approval on this? Or, um, are we pretty hamstrung by DEP needs to provide us with, uh, their permit? I see, I see. Angela's kind of nodding and want to jump in, Angela.
Well, I guess, um, backing up a little bit, I know we have other subdivisions in town. We've had to deal with this in the non-compliance, um, with, with trying to build outside the building envelopes. And so as Kylie said, there is a process. This isn't the first time this has been requested or asked for. I think it gets into different exemptions and really that's not for this board, it's for DEP to kind of issue. And I guess, um, I'm agreeing that I don't think it's a stormwater buffer because as Kylie said, those are, are deeded and pinned and those are, um, recorded. This is more about the, the, the language in the permit. And again, it's the DEP permit, not the local permit, um, specifically about building envelopes. And then locally, we kind of ran with that, it looks like, and kept that similarly. Um, so at the time, um, and, and the board has seen this even recently, developers coming in and wanting to build smaller stormwater footprints. And so they limit the amount of area, even though you have a six-acre lot. We've seen it where they show a clearing of one acre and trying to cram a septic system and a well and a house altogether. And so that's kind of, um, there's nothing to limit in the ordinance, the developer from doing that or limit, you know, doesn't kind of for the planning board not to approve something like that. It's more about these common sense. And so to have these conversations, and I know recently the board has been really good about that and trying to figure out, can you actually provide a lot that people want to, to buy and know what they're buying and know that they can fit what they need on their lot in that buildable area? So I just don't want to get in a situation where So I just don't want to get in a situation where we are providing a, an approval that is in direct conflict with a DEP permit because that puts the town in a very awkward position and not a good light. So we kind of go back and forth and I do a lot of, what I do is cleaning up a lot of these things and trying to work with DEP. So I'd rather be ahead of it than behind it. And so to get clarification from DEP, I think would be important.
I would agree. I think it's, I think it's a simple thing that we could simply just work. If it is an exemption, then we can just get a statement of that and it's pretty straightforward.
And I would mention that, Rick, your comment too about utilities out there is another good one because it would be good to know that ahead if you have any intention of doing those type of things because that should be part of what you're requesting from DEP, rather than going back in a year or two and have to do this all over again. Cause you, if, if you have any inkling that you're gonna want to do something like that, like run underground power or something, then you need to figure that out. I think it just, just a heads up on that.
Yeah, we can certainly add that to the plan. It certainly would be good to understand what's written. I know that we've had some correspondence with, with staff to date on, on some of this. And so this kind of new news tonight, which is perhaps a little bit unfortunate, but so, but we can add the power to the plan. And what I would ask though is if we, I'd, I'd like not to have to sit through another round of planning board meetings to get approval for sheds. So would it be possible to gain approval based on DEP? You know, getting clarity on the DEP component?
That was what I was gonna ask if, if we could, you know, at least let the applicant know how we feel about the shed. I, I don't think that's going to be an issue. And that way, once they do get the DEP approval, and staff, you know, staff is satisfied with it, then everything's all set.
Yeah, what I, what I might offer, and I think Nick, you sort of alluded to, is there a way to sort of take a look at this issue that's similarly to Riverwoods? And I think, you know, with Riverwoods, again, I think there, the board really separated the questions. There were two different issues. There was the, the lot line adjustment, and then there was the buffer question. And really the board set the buffer question aside until the DEP came forward with an answer. And I think, you know, locally, what the conversation that Jamelle, Angela and others have had is, you know, if and should the DEP be satisfied, then we don't think that, you know, there's a, a major issue here. But that's certainly the fact that, again, you know, we, we have, or see in that, that DEP permit sort of holding that. Maybe the way to look at it is to think about this potentially coming back to the, if the board's comfortable with the general parameters and assuming that DEP ultimately is on board as well, that this come back just as a simple consent item. And the reason I mention that is sometimes these site law permit, who knows how long that could take? And if the board's approval, you know, we don't have a, you know, there's only a certain timeframe to get the plan signed and recorded. And so depending on how long that process takes, you know, consent obviously is very quick and, you know, one, you know, it's not even really a conversation at that point, that that would be a way to potentially move it forward if the board, certainly the board can.
I guess the last is, is there anyone on this board that is uncomfortable with going through to a consent if they show up with, to staff with their DEP letter?
If I, if I may, Mr. Chair, the, as I see this, this is most likely going to fall under a DEP exemption under site law. There wouldn't necessarily be a statement from DEP, a letter. There, there would simply be an email. Because that wouldn't require an amendment to the site law permit because it would fall under the exemption. There would be no amendment to wait for. I would wager, I guess, that the four years probably would not want to go through a site law amendment process, simply because the application fee and process is cumbersome, probably beyond a local process. And with that and understanding the exemptions that are in place, I, I can't imagine that would be an issue under the exemption. So if I might, I think I would, I would suggest and ask the board to consider making approval condition on the DEP, I guess, authorization as opposed to making a consent item and not ask the four years to, to lay waiting for the next planning board meeting to have an approval.
Excuse me. What I'm hearing is though that staff is uncomfortable with that. Approach and I mean.
I'll just throw it out here.
Is staff uncomfortable with that?
It's just not typical with your current policy with outside agencies approvals or correspondence in hand. And this was sent out on, on October 22nd. So it's not like it's brand new news this evening. It was in the staff review comments.
Great, but October 22nd was the Friday before the meeting.
Two Fridays ago. So it wasn't, it's not a brand new issue tonight. I just want to make that clear.
I do want to say that I, I think for people trying to do the right thing, this is a really hard process to go through. And I think that people would be discouraged. And I can imagine people putting sheds out there because this is so difficult. And well, thank you, Jamelle, for pointing out that it was the 22nd, but I think we requested this in July and we're trying to do the right thing here. And that feels like it's really difficult.
Yeah, the, also with regard to the question of a DEP approval, I think, you know, precedent's already been set tonight of a DEP approval, conditional DEP approval item, I believe was, was the Riverwoods item, so.
Yeah, and actually that was the point I was trying to make is that the board didn't give the conditional approval with that one. That what they approved was a lot line adjustment and they set aside the question of the DEP permit. Again, board, as, as you know, as we've heard me say many times, we will act at the discretion of the board. So.
Yeah, this is, I mean, this is, this is a bad situation all the way around, in my personal opinion. I just see items like this, languish this, this board though, I mean, I've been on the board for seven years. I has not once, I believe, deviated from having DEP permits in hand before handles. If anyone, Roger's been on the board quite a while. I don't know if Jay, Jay, you've been around since I've been around. So I don't remember anyone deviating from that.
So I guess the question is Kylie's approach. I mean, it seems like a very reasonable.
She's, she's asking us to grant you an actual approval without the DEP permit or.
No, I'm asking a conditional.
Right. And, and Jay, you could correct me if I'm wrong. Has this board ever DEP, an approval awaiting a DEP?
Um, I, it may have happened. I can't, you know, honestly, I don't know offhand. I know there's been.
It's put you on the spot like that, but.
Yep, yes. There's, over, over the course of 13 years, there's been a lot of different conditions or waivers that the board has considered throughout time. So I, you know.
So I mean, I guess at this point, just rest on the board, their comfort level with going ahead and doing a, well, I guess we have two options in front of us, right? One, we go through the process that has been standing and they've, they can be put on for a consent item. Or two, we can grant their conditional approval pending they provide staff with the appropriate DEP. What, what would you call them? Authorizations?
Or amendments. Yeah, again, not knowing exactly what the process is, I understand Ms. Mason has things that, you know, we, we just don't know what that process looks like yet.
They would say that, I mean, this would not be an amendment because they simply won't be able to afford going through an amendment process.
All right, board.
Can I, yeah. Mr. Forty, or Mrs. indicated that they started this process back in July. Is that correct? What, what happened in July? You went to our, our planning department?
We submitted for a permit and the permit was denied. And there wasn't any, we weren't given any course of action. So we reached out to Sebago Technics to help us survey our land and walk us through this process because we didn't know what else to do. And eventually we've ended up here. But we've had our site survey where, as my husband said, we've spent at this point, in addition to whatever we'll pay for the shed, we've spent $3,000 just to get the information to come to this meeting and to pay the $600 fee to come to this meeting today.
Personally, that disturbs me that it's taken since July to this point. This particular item clarified.
I certainly don't want to ask anybody to, to do something that's outside of the process. And I think that what Kylie proposed seems like a reasonable solution, given that we're, we won't be able to get a permit unless, unless the staff is satisfied with, with the information that we would get from the DEP. Again, we are not trying to make a mountain out of a molehill here. I.
I think we, I think we all understand and sympathize with your position. I think right now, at this point, I need to get the board to weigh in. I think staff's made their position clear. I think your, your engineers tried to help as well as you. So. So Roger, we gotta, we gotta push this one way or the other. Are we going to go through the process and wait for, put it back on for a consent item? Or we just gonna do additional approval tonight?
Well, I hate to go against staff, but I, I just, I, I, I wish we could do something conditional to, or just to be able to move this along and make it easier for people.
Is it, is it worth pointing out that we're a week, we're only two weeks away, right, from our next meeting? Because this is, this is a continuation from last week. So even if you were, even if this were to be placed as a consent agenda, it would, would it be heard at the next meeting, which would be in two weeks?
No, aren't, aren't we past the submission deadline for the next agenda?
We are, and I think they would need some sort of DEP correspondence anyway. So it, I don't know. It depends on when they hear from them.
Right, okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
So Jennifer, you want to weigh in?
I just don't like this. I'm sorry. I have a shed of my own and I'm so glad right now that it's already there and that I don't have to go through this myself. And I know that we all feel that way. We all own property here and it's just a really crappy situation. I'm sure that when you wanted a shed, you had no idea about a giant DEP permit that blanketed your whole subdivision. That's my guess. That said, I do, you know, I do think that there is some value in hearing from the DEP on this one. In terms of just what, how they would weigh in and just confirming that it would fall under an exemption before actually, before actually approving it.
Thanks, Jennifer. Rachel?
Yeah, I, we, we managed to kind of split the baby earlier this evening because there were some things, a couple of things that went on that were actually within our purview. But we can do it with the, the DEP and I, I think I am most comfortable with putting this on a consent agenda. I, I've got a great deal of sympathy and understand the costs involved and would hate to try to undertake it in my subdivision. But we do have, as a planning board, an obligation to to sometimes make decisions that we don't personally like to make, but by the, by the regulations, we need to make them. And I, I think the consent agenda, consent item is the, the best thing to do with this.
Thank you, Rachel.
Yeah, all this for a shed, but I, I think the consent agenda item is appropriate and we can get this done and, and keep consistency and, and maintain the support for the staff that, that have to deal with this with other applicants coming down the line. At least they, they, they have some level of assurance that, that the planning board will, will have the best word, I guess, is support, support the process and support the, the the ordinances in the way they were written to, to protect everybody. So I'm, I'm in favor of just getting this on a consent after DEP's weighed in.
So can I ask a question just in terms of the consent item? Kylie, you had mentioned that, is that possible with what we have or is, is it, are we talking about just confirming the DEP approval?
And it's really about time and, and the scrubber playing agendas quite popular these days. It would just draw everyone's attention. I have pulled up the state statute for site law that describes exemption for new construction or modification of an existing development. It describes the exemption and how it applies. And since this is a site law application, what I would ask and, and what we will be asking the DEP to verify, and we have used it on other developments in the state of Maine, is that this is, this would be additional disturbed area not to be revegetated, that is under 10,000 square feet. But that any disturbance specifically to that, if we are describing a buffer, it's not vegetated. It's not a forested buffer. It's not a stormwater buffer because it hasn't been pinned and recorded in the registry of deeds. It would say is simply a, one of those typical notes that shows up on a, on an order, especially in the early 90s. And that this exemption would cover that because this would be disturbance revegetated. And that the only disturbance that would not be revegetated would in fact be the shed, which is under 10,000 square feet. And then I would, I would simply say that we have made, because this was part of the discussion we had, when, when the applicant did come forward, was how can we provide stormwater for new disturbance and new impervious? And I think we've done that very successfully with the drip edge. And so since we're talking about a lot line and the, the item brought up is a buffer that was referenced on an order, it seems to me that the state statute does allow for this exemption. It seems that if the, if what the direction we want to go is a consent item, then I would ask that most likely what we're going to receive is simply an email from a DEP permitting agent verifying this because you can see that the requirement is simply that you provide notification to DEP, not that you ask for permission from DEP.
So I assume then that evidence would be turned and over to staff. Is that correct? Staff would.
Right, but there's not.
Get it and say, yeah.
There's really nothing for, if we simply just provide the notification as is required by the statute, there's not really anything required from the response. So I can, I can ask for it.
Can, can I ask, does the staff have, disagree with that exemption description?
I think it, I'm sorry, can I jump in?
Go ahead, Angela.
I think as Kylie pointed out from the very beginning, it really depends on the language and how it's read and how DEP interprets it. So it would be asking staff to, to determine how DEP would interpret it. And I, I'm not comfortable with that tonight. Doing that for, for you, I'm sorry. I think she's right with the exemptions. And that's why I pointed out to the four years, if you're gonna do it, do it once and just say, this is what we're gonna do. I think it's gonna be an easier process that way and get it out of there. I also don't know if it's an active homeowners association, if you're talking about reporting annually, are there others? And is this an accumulative kind of thing? Or that's something that DEP would have to look at. So I, I understand there's exemptions and, and people get them all the time. They come through this office and we, we see those. So I, I'd want to have a, a bigger conversation about it, I guess, than just trying to figure out if this meets everything. And like I said, kind of making that interpretation for DEP.
I think just to, to, to jump on to Angela's point, I think this is sort of one of the struggles that locally we, we typically have when it's a state or another agency's permit, that's, you know, we're, we're really. That's, you know, we're, we're really, it's hard for us to interpret what their, what their rules are. We think we may know, but that's, but, you know, so I think as has already been pointed out, from a local perspective, we typically would have a fifteen foot side yard setback. And so I think staff's generally comfortable with the proposal. If we see something from DEP that's, you know, I think we're all, we're all feeling the frustrations that the forty years are expressing. We, we understand them and we appreciate them. But unfortunately, sometimes we wind up in the position of having to sort of say, well, there's this thing and there's, we need to understand that. And so that's sort of, again.
Yeah, I certainly, certainly understand the challenges with, uh, with the DEP permit. Um, I think what we're trying to drive towards is how can we get through this, in, in a way that still allows, uh, the town to meet its obligations, but also, uh, simplify the process a little bit for us.
And I think that, and just so you, you appreciate from forty years, uh, a consent, you know, that's typically something we put early on the agenda because again, the board's really talked about it. And provided the board is generally comfortable hearing that staff is, you know, as soon as we see something from the state level that they're fine too, then this is on the agenda very early. It comes up. Basically the chair says, anyone have, have anything additional on this? Typically there isn't anything. And then there, the motion's read and it's dispensed with, within minutes. Um, so it is.
I would say with Jay, yeah, it's typical that consent items are right, you know, right after our, you know, minutes and, you know, it's one of the, one of the first things we take up, right? Because it's a quick vote, um, rather than a full presentation in the note. Um, let me ask one more clarifying question. Um, is there, is there a way to get on an agenda in two weeks? If they turn in a letter or an email or whatever it might be? And is there, is it by statute too late to get onto an agenda for the planning board for two weeks from now?
I mean, I guess one, one thing we could look at, if there's no other concerns from the board, um, we could, where the agenda gets set tomorrow, we could put this on the agenda and just know that, you know, we're waiting on that DEP commentary. And if that doesn't come in, then we'll table it at the next meeting.
We could table it, right?
Yep. And then it just come up three weeks later, whenever that DEP is in hand. Um, if the board is, you know.
Kylie, is that something that you can turn around to the, the town staff tomorrow as a request to be on the agenda?
Absolutely. We appreciate the consideration. We'll, we'll reach out to DEP, um, and we'll send you out tomorrow asking that you put on the agenda for consent item.
I think I can get a response from the DEP in a couple of weeks.
Okay. So I think that's where your head. And hopefully that gives you a look and, you know, we, we really all appreciate the frustration you've gone through here. Uh, it's not often we have engineers design sheds for people. Actually, it's probably the worst, one of the worst things you can look at here as a planning board member because you know the system is not entirely working itself. Um, but again, we, we do our best, um, and you gotta respect that staff and town and these board members who want to respect, uh, not just, uh, the local authority, but the, uh, the state authority on some of these projects as well.
We appreciate.
We'll see you hopefully in two weeks and it will be quick and easy for you.
Thank you.
I did want to tell the, uh, staff, we appreciate because the application was turned in in October and they did do a phenomenal job of getting it on the agenda. So we do appreciate that.
Great. We'll, uh, continue to coordinate with everyone and, uh, appreciate it.
Thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
All right, Nick. Next item on tonight's agenda. Crossword Holdings requests a subdivision amendment review for the Innovation District subdivision within the Downs Assessor's map U fifty-three lots one through fifty-five. Jamel?
Thank you, Mr. Share. This is a pretty, uh, simple proposed amendment. Uh, the applicants proposing to combine lots forty-six, forty-seven and fifty-five into a single lot, into a reconfigured lot of three point one seven acres. And at this point, staff has no further comments.
Thank you, Jamel. And Nancy?
This is Dan. I'm going to present this one really quick. Um, and Jamel did a great introduction and the only thing I have to add is this plan here that illustrates a lot forty-six when it's combined. So if you can see my hand, um, this is the location of the, the new lot forty-six and it's created by combining forty-seven, forty-six and fifty-five to accommodate the, uh, the next applicant on your agenda. Thanks. Happy to answer questions.
All right. We do have opportunity for public comment on this item. Like to speak on this, please use the raise my hand feature. All right. Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment. Uh, Board, any comments, questions? All right. Seeing none. Jamel? I move to approve the project titled fourth amended so overall subdivision plan proposed by Crossroad Holdings LLC as depicted on the plan set prepared by girl ten five twenty with the following findings conditions. The, the proposed fourth amendment subdivision plan includes a combination of lots forty-five, forty-seven and fifty-five into one lot. The post reconfigured lot is three point one seven acres in size and depicted it has lot four subdivision is located with the crossroads planned development CPD zoning district and is further identified on the town of Scarborough tax map as map U fifty-three lot four conditions. The existing condition from the July twenty second twenty-nine board division approval will remain in effect. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? Okay. I'm going to call the roll, uh, in favor. Rachel Hendrickson?
Yes.
Roger Beely?
Yes.
Rick Minkin?
Yes.
Jennifer Ladd?
Yeah.
Thank you. Yes. Thank you. I'm sure that is unanimous.
Thank you.
Next item on tonight's agenda is Foria LLC requests a site plan review for lots forty-six, forty-seven, fifty-five within the Innovation District subdivision at the Downs Assessor's map U fifty-three lots forty-six, forty-seven, fifty-five. Probably should have reworded that to represent lot forty-six. X, is that correct? Okay. Jamel?
Thank you, Mr. Share. So on the new lot forty-six, uh, the applicants proposed that it construct a forty-four thousand one hundred and sixty square foot building. It'll consist of product preparation, light assembly, refurbishment areas, storage and future office space. Uh, the project is on lot forty-six and, um, at the end of immersion drive, uh, private access drive, actually across the street from zoom, the zoom drain site. So staff did have several comments that related to the proposed driveways on the site. Um, one of those comments was about the southerly driveway, um, and its width and how there was an opportunity, uh, appeared to be an opportunity to extend the landscape island, um, to narrow the width of the driveway and also provide a refuge area for pedestrians, um, utilizing the crosswalk. And then Seth also noted that the northerly driveway is forty feet wide, um, and, uh, did recommend that this be narrowed as much as possible. A few other recommendations. Uh, the next one was to provide additional plantings within the landscape island, uh, to the west of the building, just to, uh, help screen the project and large building from abutting properties. And then the applicant's also proposing, um, twenty parking spaces instead of the required one hundred and twenty, uh, for the building square footage. So the, as the board knows, the zoning ordinance does allow the board to, uh, reduce the requirements for off-street parking spaces if it's determined that the use can be, that the project can go on without, uh, the required spaces. Um, so there, once again, they're require, they're providing, uh, proposing twenty spaces instead of the one twenty and believe that they can, uh, the project will be fine with those spaces. Um, and finally, uh, the applicant should discuss the proposed building design and the interior functionality, uh, with the board. At this point, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Jamel. Uh, Nancy?
Sure. Thank you. Uh, my name is Nancy St. Clair. I'm here tonight with Jim Benfleet, who should be, uh, joining us. Uh, Jim will do a portion of our presentation, but I'd like to get started, uh, with the description of the site. Uh, Jamel did a great introduction, uh, to the site. Uh, as you see on the screen, hopefully you all can see it and hear me well tonight. Uh, the plan that, uh, is before you is for the consolidated three lots that you folks just approved, uh, as part of the amendment to the Innovation District. So these three lots are now, uh, lot forty-six in the Innovation District. They had been lots forty-six, forty-seven and fifty-five. So the three lots are basically, there's one here, there's one here and one down here. So they're all consolidated into a three point one seven acre site. Uh, the applicant is proposing a building that is approximately forty-four thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine square feet, which includes the building plus the dock appendage, which is located, uh, on this area here. There are also provisions for, uh, additional upstairs, uh, second floor space, uh, in the future, uh, which would be a ten thousand square foot storage area and up to twenty-five hundred square feet of, uh, office space in the building. So as Jamel pointed out, we're proposing twenty parking spaces on the site and they're located in, this is the, uh, west side of the building. This is the south side of the building. So in the southwest corner are these twenty proposed parking spaces along with additional spaces at the rear. The function of the building, Jim will get into the discussion of the internal function of the building, but this is a designed build for, uh, mainly tubs. And it allows, uh, certain operational aspects of their, uh, pain road site to be relocated to this site. And so we'll talk a little bit about the internal functions when, uh, Jim gets on and discusses that. But we wanted to talk a little bit about the site. We have a program that allows for truck circulation around the entire perimeter of the building in a general clockwise position. There are two docks here at the dock appendage and then they're allowed to access onto immersion drive. This is a private drive, uh, that is one of the, uh, one of several drives that are being constructed in the Innovation District. We're on, if you folks recall from the reviews of the projects on dynamic drive, we are located south of Innovation Way and a little bit to the east of those, uh, projects. So this is, uh, one of the new sites on in, in immersion drive. And if you recall from our last presentation last Monday, you folks approved the zoom drain lot, which is located right here. So this is the driveway entrance to zoom drain and this is the circulation pattern around the zoom drain building and access back on to immersion drive. So if you recall from our presentation, we talked about the fact that we had coordinated with the subutting site and provided for our access, uh, to tie in at this shared location here with access onto immersion drive. The other aspect of the use of the site is with regard to the smaller delivery vehicles that will actually, uh, take the tubs and take them to homeowners to sites. So in that process, the trucks would actually come around the building here. There, there are a truck and a trailer, a large pickup truck, three quarter ton with a trailer behind it that, that toes, uh, the tubs to the individual site. So they would come along here and access an overhead door on the east side of the building. The tubs would be loaded onto the trucks in this area here and the, the vehicles will actually exit the west side of the building by this overhead door. So, uh, our, the simplest maneuver for those vehicles is to actually exit and come out to the north and then use the north exit to get onto immersion drive. Uh, so the pattern of circulation allows that sort of looped configuration all the way around the building in a general clockwise, uh, position. It is a two-way, uh, circulation pattern. Simply because as you folks had seen in the packet, we have a parking exhibit based on the size of the building. This building would by ordinance require a hundred and twenty parking spaces on the site. We are proposing twenty. Uh, but in that expanded parking exhibit, you'll see that that parking would occur on sort of the outer edges of this drive aisle. So that provides for a two-way parking configuration in the event that that additional parking were ever needed. In addition, that allows for the truck maneuvering, uh, the trailer trucks that come and deliver the tubs are quite sizable vehicles. So wanted to make sure we had adequate maneuvering area for them. That's what dictates the width of the driveways on the south side as well as on the north side. Uh, we received staff comments. One of the requests was to look at, uh, trying to tighten up this entrance as well as this one. In particular, on this one, you'll see we have done that. This graphic represents that change. What we've provided is for a extended island. We've reconfigured the walkway such that the walkway is within a curbed island area. So there's a little bit more refuge for any pedestrian that might be in this area. And we've straightened the crosswalk. On the plans that you folks had, that came down sort of at an angle and came around and into the site there. So we've tightened that up. Um, so at this location here, uh, we are asking for a thirty-eight foot width. And at this location here, we're asking for an eighty-three foot width. We have provided the truck maneuvering, uh, templates that show the vehicle exiting the, the trailer truck exiting. This dock area needs that location right there, uh, in order to clear. And that's sort of what dictates in that location, uh, there, what, what that width can be. But we have tightened it up, uh, as best that we can, uh, allowing for appropriate maneuvering. The same configuration up here, we tightened it up, but we do have to allow that truck to come in and enter there. So, uh, as part of our review process, we are asking for three waivers. Those waivers are with regard to the entrances we've just described as well as the separation distance from the edge of curb here to the edge of curb there. Um, that's actually increased with this revision as well. So we're looking at a three foot separation there. And realistically from the separation of vehicle from here to here, it's on the order of about twenty-two feet. Um, the third waiver that we're asking for is with regard to the drive aisle width, uh, and we're asking that it be twenty-four feet as opposed to twenty-five feet. In the process of doing these modifications that we've discussed, we also looked at adjusting the pavement edge here to reduce a little bit of the impervious cover, uh, on the site. So we've actually had a reduction in impervious cover with these changes that have been requested by staff such that we are, we had been, um, a little bit, um, under sixty-six point nine percent. If you recall in the Innovation District, the threshold is eighty percent of impervious cover. So we're well below it. With the changes that we've just made, we've taken out another fourteen hundred and eighty-six square feet of impervious area. So we're actually down to a little over sixty-six and a half percent. So we're well within the coverage requirements, uh, for the Innovation District such that we don't need to, uh, do any onsite stormwater treatment. All of the stormwater from the site is collected in the storm drain system that's being constructed in immersion drive and it goes up to wet pond one, which is located northwest of us. Uh, and is the, the large pond that's been constructed on the site. The, um, project has been approved by the Scarborough Sanitary District. We received their approval on the twenty-second of October and we are awaiting our Portland Water District sign-off letter. The, um, plans also include a landscape plan, which as Jamel noted, there was some recommendations for some additional landscaping on the site. This graphic represents the additional landscaping that we've added. Uh, there are originally, there were three Princeton elm trees along immersion drive. We've added two additional trees and they are, uh, honey locust trees, uh, which are located, uh, in the gaps, if you will. So they're providing a little bit of diversity of color and size, uh, in shape, uh, to augment the plantings along this area here. We've also added there, along this area here, the original plan had Northwood red maples. We've added additional Northwood red maples in this area here to continue that band around and supplement the trees that are located on this end, which are sugar maples. And we also have Norway spruce as an evergreen buffer along this area here. We've also added along this edge of the building, which would be the east edge of the building. We have Armstrong maples and along this edge and along this corner, we have immolankiers or shad bush, which are fairly common throughout other planting plans in the Innovation District. The maples that you see in this area here are comparable to the maples that were on the approved plan for the project across the street as well. These two trees were on the original, uh, the previously approved plan for the butter. And we've added additional Korean fir as an evergreen to shield around the dumpster area. So we have added, uh, additional landscaping from what you see on your plan, uh, to address, uh, the staff comments that we've received. In addition, for place making, uh, we do have some pedestrian scale amenities on the site in this location here. In this location here, we have a proposed pad and an area for picnic table uh to provide an outdoor space for uh any uh one working or, or using the facility. In this area here, we have a large open meadow area, which is envisioned to be able to have some passive recreational opportunities as well. In addition, we had a bike rack that was located over here. In accordance with staff recommendations, we've relocated that bike rack to this location here, giving it a better proximity to the sidewalk network that ties into immersion drive. Remember, um, the program with the shared bike pedaling along the private drives, that is also consistent here on both sides. And then we also have the crosswalk and the walkway to the crosswalk across the end of immersion drive. So we do have sort of a pedestrian loop, if you will, to be able to get out to immersion drive. We have some outdoor um recreational space opportunities for those folks who are uh at the site. Uh, speaking of the number of employees that we're looking at for the site, there are eleven delivery employees that would be uh on the site, three warehouse workers and potentially three additional workers who would be there throughout the day. Their operation timing is a little bit different than other uh more traditional businesses. They're very early morning, uh in early afternoon, they, they end their, their work. So their, their trucks are loaded and they're out and they're on the road. Uh, and they're gone before the uh morning peak traffic, if you will. Their delivery trucks that come in are early morning deliveries that come in to uh bring uh the tubs in this location here. Uh, and those happen, those trucks actually are on a fairly uh limited schedule, if you will. During the winter months, they may get a truck every one or two weeks. During the peak season, they may get two trucks a week. And so we're not talking about a tremendous amount of truck traffic that will be making any deliveries to this area. During their peak season, they run three or four delivery of trucks of tubs to go to homeowners. Um, and then um it drops off obviously in other, other times of the year. And Jim can talk a little bit more uh about that. So uh as we mentioned, we're proposing only twenty parking spaces on the site, which accommodates the number of people that would be there uh on the property. I'm going to uh change a little bit now and talk to you about the building itself. And then we'll get into the building internal operations with Jim. And then I'd like to come back um after Jim is done with his presentation, talk to you folks about uh some of the other comments that we've received and, and um the process moving forward. So um the next item that I'd like to show you are just some of the building elevations. So that you can see, there's, it's a two-tone uh building program. This is the view as you would approach the site from immersion drive. So the overhead door that we talked about with the trucks exiting is shown on this side. The activities in that um portion of the building uh really focus sort of on this, what would be the southwest corner of the building. We do have some additional glazing uh in this location here on the north side of the building, on the northwest corner. Uh, not a lot of activity there, most of the activity is really happening uh down in this area here. The upstairs uh windows are to add light into the building, but also, also provide opportunities uh once that uh second floor mezzanine is constructed, that there would be window access up there. You have a second emergency door uh and some glazing on the north side as well. This is a, a straight-on view, this would be the primary elevation view as you see it from immersion drive. This is the west wall, uh there's that overhead door that we talked about. And there's the primary activity areas sort of in this area of the building. This rendering uh is pre the addition of more landscaping in this area here. So there would be additional trees that would be placed in the middle uh here as well. This is the secondary elevation. This is a back lot in the Innovation District. So we're talking about fifteen percent fenestration requirements on the, both this north wall, that's the secondary elevation, and the west wall, which is the primary elevation. The plans submitted to you folks do show uh that they have met the fifteen percent required fenestration on both of those elevations. So this is again the north elevation of the site. These are perspective views at the dock area, so you can see that angled dock uh projecting out. This is that southeast corner of the building, so there's your north wall. And uh you can see the overhead door coming in to the site, so that's where the smaller trucks would access. The building is designed such that those trucks can stay in there at night. Uh, and they'll be ready to go and to be loaded in the morning. And this is a bird's eye view of the site, you can see the dock, you can see the, the exit door um for the, for the vehicles exiting the site and the parking proposed uh in this area here. So with that, I am going to turn to Jim, uh if he's available and have him uh speak to the building itself. I do have the floor plan that we can talk from as well, if Jim would like to use that.
Or why don't you put that up, Nancy? Uh, thanks everybody for uh this second week of uh keeping us on what I hope is a schedule that will break ground this fall. Um, this is um uh an, an extension basically of activity that's been happening on the Payne Road. Rick, I'll tell you that the solar panels up there at the solar farm have been going for three months and we haven't yet seen a nickel from CMP.
That's CMP's prob, that's CMP's problem, but I'm glad you're gen- generating.
And, and you could go charge up your car up there, there are two free spots.
You are awesome.
Nice educational display. I hope that someday there's a five hundred and fifty KW capability on this roof. And so I'm looking at that, I won't do it right away, but um gotta digest this whole thing. But there's a really good solar act, solar opportunity here. Um, at five days a week, um, uh fourteen people will be coming, who now work on the Payne Road will be coming here to do their work. Three of them are schedules and schedulers and they are, are product preparers. This is um a facility, the south side of this facility at the bottom of your screen will be the area where uh at least three quarters, sometimes nearly every delivery every day has accessories and various preparation required before it can get to a consumer's home. And so we have staff who are regularly assigned here that are now assigned up at the Payne Road who do that and will do it here. Um, the other eleven people are all part of the delivery crews who are now up at the Payne Road, who will be, who will come here in the early morning. They'll collect all their product and they'll go off in, in uh three drips, three of our own delivery crews. There'll be an independent crew that comes from New Hampshire. Our expansion and growth has happened not only in Maine, but also in New Hampshire. We're, we're also growing uh elsewhere in New Hampshire and, and, and this facility is designed to accommodate the product for Seacoast, New Hampshire and, and all of our main activity. Um, so the, the uh, the, they go out in the field, disperse themselves during the course of the day and they're back by generally two to two-thirty in the afternoon. They uh, they stop at the Payne Road facility on the way back, drop off anything that uh happens to uh be taken for trade-in because the refurbishment, refurbishment facility is still up on the Payne Road. And that's kind of the production facility that may someday come down here, but we don't have a clear line of sight on that yet. Um, but we've got the, the space uh for it if and as necessary. Uh, and then they come back here, they bring their trucks in as Nancy described and, and uh, and they either fill up if they have time uh the next day's activity or they wait till the morning to fill up their trucks and get ready to go. Um, the accessories that are a part of um uh that go into uh each of the tubs come down um every day. The shipping and receiving for, for all of mainly tubs happens at the Payne Road. And so the product that has to get scheduled for each of the particular tubs gets um allocated on a daily basis. So a pickup truck comes down, brings whatever is necessary to here is the, the vision that we have. So it's a, um, not a, not a high activity location during the course of the day. Um, but it's uh critical for us, we've outgrown every facility that we have. And, and uh we're, we're blessed to be a COVID winner in all of this and, and need uh this kind of space in order to uh expand our business. What did I forget, Nancy, anything?
Oh, I think, I think you um have given a good description of that.
As a ma- as a matter of levity, uh, thank you very much for whoever named it immersion drive. Seems particularly apropos for us.
So um as, as we've described, um, we, we have received the staff memorandum. We actually, as a team, have put together the entire response uh to that memorandum. You've seen uh a few of those items uh in our discussion tonight, but we do have a full formal response that we had put together. Um, in going through that process, you know, we have um been able to address the comments uh that we have received to date. Uh, one of the things I did want to share with you is with regard to uh Bill Bray's comments. Uh, Bill had asked for a few things in his memo, uh, one of which was to have additional traffic counts that would be done on the site. And uh Goral Palmer has, has uh had a conversation and a meeting uh with Bill to discuss that item in particular, uh and has shared with them information that Jim had already provided to Randy with regard to their staffing levels, with regard to the timing of their operation, the schedule of their staff, that type of thing. And based on that information, uh Bill has indicated that, that counts would not be necessary at this point, that that data does substantiate that. So Randy has put together a response to uh Bill's comments that we will be working through with Bill uh in the process of, of moving forward. And as I mentioned, we have prepared uh the comment and response package that's typically required uh to address staff and peer review memos. So we're, we're comfortable and we're confident that things have been addressed. We're hopeful that you folks would uh consider granting approval. Uh, if it's not possible for that, we would ask that perhaps we'd be able to get on to the next agenda uh as a consent item, uh if you folks are comfortable with that approach as well. Because we do feel that we've addressed uh the staff comments and, and don't feel that there's really anything particularly onerous that's outstanding. Uh, so with that, I would certainly uh take a, a look to discuss with you folks uh your comments and um hopefully an opportunity to uh move forward. So thank you.
Thanks Nancy, uh and Jim. So with this, um, I understand that, yeah, the request for a consent item, I think with the, the number of cons, just, and they've done a good job addressing uh the bulk of them here, uh but giving, you know, the staff the extra time to review them is gonna be really helpful. So uh based on how we go with this discussion, I'm comfortable uh to answer your question with getting this to where I think you're, you're right around the area of getting there. So um, I'm, you know, I'm okay with the reduced parking number. I know that's one of the questions in the reduced uh aisle with, I, you know, I understand that did provide us uh plans showing what an expanded parking set could look like uh if, if the need ever arose and I appreciate you doing that. So for the time being, uh the applicant knowing what their staffing needs would be here at a location like this, um, or companies, it's, I'm fine with the, the amount of reduced parking we see. Thank you for addressing some of the cat, comments from staff regarding the uh drive aisle widths. Uh, I'm sorry, the um, the curb cut widths. And you, what was your, um, what were you at before you went to eighty-three feet? Was that number bef- before you got there?
Ninety.
You were at ninety-three, we'll take about seven off based off your modeling. And that was basically because of the modeling from the tractors, right, tractor trailer trucks?
That's correct. We combined that reduction with a redesign of the sidewalk so that the sidewalk shifted north, the island shifted south. We gave us a little bit better refuge for any pedestrian that might be in that walkway.
Great. Um, so with that, I don't have a whole lot to add to what I've seen in the presentation. Do any of my fellow board members have questions or comments on this one? Rachel?
Yeah, I was just wondering when uh you anticipate putting the mezzanine of the second floor on. If, is that uh coming soon or?
My guess is, uh, right now, we're still talking to the contractor. We think we might put four thousand of just open mezzanine to get the structure in place and, and then allow us for the next year or two to understand what happens to our business, to see whether it's even necessary. Um, uh, the nexus of our customer base is gonna be shifting a little bit to the south because we're expanding more in, in central New Hampshire. So uh we don't wanna have to drive all the way from Scarborough to uh Peterborough, New Hampshire to deliver a hot tub. We'd like, we may move some product elsewhere and hence not necessarily need everything that we have put on our wish list for the next ten years for this building.
Uh, you know, it would be helpful to uh take a look at that in the follow-up plan.
Yeah, if Nancy, if Nancy puts the, the floor plan up, uh, right now, we're talking about that four thousand square feet, uh Rachel, being in the southwest corner above the area, um, yeah, above the area where there are offices and mechanical rooms. So uh four thousand square feet starts at the stairs and goes west and goes up pa- just past the overhead door. And so that area for parts and accessories is what we're thinking about, kind of an open mezzanine for now. Maybe shelving, but um it, it's possible that some of the marketing material that's now up at the Payne Road may come down here. No, no staff, which is one of the things that we wanted to and did clarify with Bill Bray. Uh, so that initial build-out of the mezzanine doesn't, doesn't have any staff.
Right, and where, where would the supports be for that? Uh, I can see the stairs, I'm looking down below and I don't see.
Yeah, if right at the, at the end of the stairs, there's a post right there where, where Nancy's got her. And there's another post over to the right of that. And so there, there is a huge post that runs that dotted line from east to west. And then the next set of posts is uh it gonna be either thirty-nine or fifty-six feet in from there. So that's enough for them to, the size of those girders will be such to allow for the build-out of the mezzanine.
Alright, so basically the infrastructure's in place with a, to, to add it.
If we were to do, if we were to do it, we didn't wanna interrupt much of the normal flow and, and wanna have the construction project going on simultaneously with stuff going on on the first floor, safety maintained, of course.
Okay. Uh, I have no problem with the parking and I actually have no problem with the consent agreement. I have no problem with the architecture, I have no problem with the landscaping, there must be something wrong, but it's just getting late, I guess. Yes, I, as I said, uh, I, I like you, I like your place making. I mean, I've looked through this and tried to find something, it's been difficult. Uh, so you really have answered, um, really responded very well to the, the questions that the, the staff and the comments that the, the staff had there. So again, no problem if we go to consent agreement.
You're very kind.
Thank you.
Thanks Rachel. Uh, Jen, I think I saw your hand up.
Um, yeah, I was just curious. I know that at your Payne Road facility, you had at some point anyway, some outdoor um, either display or storage of hot tubs, but I noticed that you don't have that here. I don't know if that's a function of uh lack of indoor space at Payne Road or if you in, at all, um, in the future intend to also have outdoor storage or display area here.
Uh, good question. We, we, um, we will not have any consumers coming here. Um, we, we, we feel as if all consumers should be where they're used to going already. And some of the outdoor display tubs that you see periodically are the refurbished models, um, the used models that are in the parking lot from time to time. Some of those are also an accumulation of the trade-in models. There has to be assessments of those as to whether There has to be assessments of those as to whether or not they'll be refurbished or not, and if not, they're taken to the dump. Uh we don't want to populate uh this nice new area with a lot of that old stuff, that there's room to take it now. And it's a closer run to take it to the recycling center from the Payne Road. Um so for that reason, we don't anticipate outside storage here.
Okay, thanks. Um and I was just curious, I appreciated the architectural um elevations and renderings, uh but I was curious what you had in mind for any type of signage or branding, I guess beyond or maybe you don't have anything planned for beyond what you've show um on that head over hang there.
Uh we don't at the moment, just because this is not and uh we're not expecting consumers to come here. And it'll be, you know, we'll have our nice logo there, it it will say a hundred percent employee owned, because that's something we're very proud of. Um uh but beyond that, we don't anticipate a lot of signage.
That makes sense. Um and then what's the size of um out of curiosity, what's what size tractor trailer did was used on the turning template um exhibit?
WB sixty-seven.
So I, you know, the, well, it does seem like that lower southerly, yeah, southerly driveway is pretty wide open, um and I think, you know, possibly be tightened up a little bit more, but I also um I run those templates myself and I know that that can be, it can be tricky to get those to work and then um obviously you don't want to tighten that so much, it doesn't actually work in real life either. Um but I was just curious about why the um can you point out what the dashed line is, I'm guessing it's a building offset maybe um that runs north to south through the dumpster area?
So this dashed line right here is the building setback line.
Okay. Um just, I was just looking at the dumpster location and how that interacts with kind of the space that it looks like you might need to pull those the larger trucks through there. Um and was just curious why that wasn't pulled over to the east a little bit, but my guess is it was probably fully pull out of the the loading bays. Um I understand you're well within the previous percentages, um and at the end of the day, that probably doesn't make a a huge bit of difference. Um but thank you for the truck dimension, I was curious about that. Other than that, I don't have any issue with the waiver for drive aisles um or reduced parking. Appreciate the exhibit that shows the full build out for parking. And I think that that's a great um great that you don't need those, yeah.
Thank you. Uh Rick or Roger, do you have anything?
Uh no, um I think they've responded to staff's comments really well and um I think it's a nice project. Um it's terrific addition for the Innovation District and uh I think um Nancy has done a nice job coordinating everything with the neighbors right across the street, so. I try with everything.
Thanks Roger, Rick.
Yeah, um are you planning on doing a black roof or a white roof on this? Um do you have it snow loaded for maybe a white roof?
I can't answer that question, Rick. Uh I'll, we'll find that answer out. Um it it is loaded for the panels, though. It's loaded for the snow with panels. Uh that was one of the stipulations. I don't I don't know whether it's black or white, so.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if you if you're thinking about the the solar on there, which I think is great, and I I know you'll you'll do the right thing. Having the white roof will eliminate some of that uh you know, heat factor in the in the summertime. Um but unfortunately, in the wintertime, you get the, you don't get the snow melting, but if you're putting panels on it, well then the sun helps get rid of that snow load. So with that, and the other thought that I just had Jim was maybe some light tubes um that would be over your your inventory. Um instead of putting in a bunch of lights, uh most of your activity is gonna be done during the day. Um and you'll have people there mostly during the daylight hours, maybe uh a few strategically placed light tubes uh might be a a nice addition for the sustainability.
Yeah, good, good thinking. That's one of the reasons I put all those windows on the second floor, not necessary, of course. But I wanted natural light in there, I didn't want to use any more electricity than I had to, and so we got those up high enough so that they, for the small portion which would be offices, they'd be nice, but for the rest of it, it's gonna provide a bunch of natural light into the space that will uh require us to use less electricity.
Yeah, you're not gonna, you're not gonna put those um um, I can't think, and it's late, uh you know how you can bring the light uh the visors over the windows? To bring in the light further into the interior space?
Yeah.
Put the expense to that, put a couple light tubes in.
Yeah, there you go.
Um anyway, I think this is a great looking building, uh Jim, and I didn't realize that uh hot tubs were such a commodity that you're expanding like this, this is great. Maybe it is a blessing for you guys, because everybody sits in their backyard with a a bottle of wine and a hot tub.
You know, in nineteen ninety-four, when I first came to Scarborough, we were a uh we were less than a two hundred thousand dollar business, this year we're gonna be a twenty million dollar business. And for our manufacturer, it's a it's a wonderful story of uh of a a group of people who now are the owners of the company doing the right thing by customers, we now have over thirty thousand customers who have chosen us as their solution for relaxation and
Well, I'm glad the Downs is available for you to
So are we, God, it's just perfect.
Excellent. Well, I I nothing, I'm fine with the drive aisle and and waivers that have been asked for, and I think you've put together a good package here. And would be happy to see it on the consent agenda next next time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Rick. All right. Um not seeing any other comments at the moment, I think um you're in really good shape, we look forward to seeing you at our next, hopefully uh take care of you then, all right?
Thank you, and a special thank you to the staff who uh even today, they were jumping up and down, responding to emails and and phone calls and getting us to a point where we could say what we said today today to you honestly and with um their thoughts in mind, so great job making making some lemonade here, I thought we were gonna have some lemons, but uh thank you all so much, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Great job Nancy.
No problem. Good luck. Thanks. So we are past ten o'clock and our apologies to uh our last item of the night, which is Ryan and Properties, and unfortunately we are big that up this evening. Um I want to do, I do want to say thank you to the board and the staff uh and all of our applicants for being patient and we took a huge chunk out of what has been incredibly large workload and number of hours that everyone's been putting in. Volunteer board members, I know that's seven, almost eight hours worth of board meetings and uh lonely a prop time during form and then for staff to be able to work as diligently, Angela, Jay and Jamelle as you have, and Doreen, of course, who uh sits there silently and takes our notes. So I um I really do appreciate all of the efforts here, so. Uh with that, uh I think we did staff report, administrative member report, correspondent, planning board comments, we did all that last time. Jay says, no, I've got more. Good day, I tried, man.
Just just one quick one. Um as Angela and Jamelle and I were talking, I think it was last meeting or or recently when we were talking about town center north at the Downs, it came up about doing a site visit. And it sounded like there was general consensus around that, but I don't ever think we sort of co you know, cohesively said yes as a board, we'd like to do a site visit, so I guess that's the question to the board tonight, and real quick, if we hear a majority yeses, we'll start the planning process offline and obviously work with the owner and all of you, but so that's the only question I have tonight.
I think it's worthwhile for, you know.
Let me just ask, is the site visit primarily to see that the uh that secondary road? You can drive down that secondary road.
Yes, I think we
You can drive down that secondary road right to right from Payne Road. So.
Is that a yes?
I'm saying e- everybody could just go drive right down the road themselves. I'm not sure it really requires a site sidewalk, but if everybody wants to do it, that's fine with me.
I don't mind going out there.
We're not gonna go to the track, you know.
It it seems, it seems to me that if we go out there, we can take a look at the whole construction area. Uh and and just simply get oriented on where things are in relation to other other parts of the of the development, so we could, we could take a look at innovation, we could see where um the gables uh is coming in and see, you know, just really get a a feel for the the next steps that we're gonna start to see.
I think it's worthwhile, just shoot around an email, see if we can set up some times.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Without any other comments, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I got a second from Roger in a form of a thumbs up. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you so much, everyone, we really do
Thank you.